So.
I know.
Well, we're going to see if it goes. The other one. The other one is. Oh, come on. Come on. Come on.
And I know.
That's what happens with that. You go back to. You go online or. You just. That's what's always.
All because of your.
It just found out.
I think it's.
No, no, no. I mean, I'm all that. I went to the darkness. And then I was trying to reach you by myself. Because I was supposed to be my. And this. And I'm like. And I'm gonna try to walk. The one that's. Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to find. So much. And I'm gonna use the airline.
Yeah, I don't know which number. But I know this. Some of them.
But that's good. Right here. That's. That's a hybrid.
Okay.
There you go.
Oh, baby, we didn't run up yet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're wearing, you guys. I'm gonna go put my sign. I'm gonna go hold my sign.
And you can get out.
I love.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm changing my last pickup.
I found, uh, quite my ass. I was. I found. About what? Who the. Next. Sitting in. Come on. Boys. Starting on.
Oh, yes.
So, I'm. I said it.
I just said, oh, my. And then. Oh, my. Yeah. Especially.
Yeah.
Especially. He's gonna be down in five minutes. But. I mean. The press release that came. But they. They not like. We want to probably just. So, because he can't say. Like, I go in there. Just. Kick off. All right. Now, she wants to go. She'll go. Yeah.
This was. Very. Hey. How's it going? All here. Who are you? Michael, yes. I remember you when. David Nice. Good to see you. Good to see you. Now, now's the best situation. This is like, this is like. We're going down in Sato. If you look at Sato, it's just like. The worst. Position down. Maybe.
Exactly. And we got. A lot of. We're a lot of stupid. On those petitions. And that's. So you think I'm the. So like, I'm a little. Probably see your. Five. You know. That's. I like. I don't think. And why do you. Want me?
I do.
Yes.
We are.
That's why I say something. I. I. I.
Yeah.
I think. I think. Both my. Better. Grabbing. For. Forty. And the.
Yes.
I have. I have. Yes. But. I would. Not leaving now. Because.
Oh, yeah. Wait a minute. I'm.
I don't. Be leaving now. Because. I'm. Because. I think. I think. I should. I don't. I don't. Yeah. Yes.
Go wait around.
Okay. You're. You're. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. So. I. I. Yeah. I don't. I don't. Yeah. I don't. I don't. I don't. No.
Hey.
Yeah. I don't. I don't. More. And the thing. I'm. Sure. I'm. 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 Yeah. I'm. I think. That's. I'm. I got. I got. I got. So. I would work on. So, yeah, that's. Good. And. I'll. 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 So. Great. Please. You're. I'm. I'm. And. I'm. Actually. I'm. I'm. So. Don't. I mean. You know. We. From. You know. Oh, he said. That was. Come on. He said. He said. Stop.
No.
I'm. I'm. I think. I think. He wants. To. He's. I'm. He's. The one. That has. Wait. No, no, no. No, no. I just. And it's good to see you. That's. What? Hi. Hi. But you. Have. What? What? That's. I'm. Do you wear? You were going to the state house. I think. I'm Vanessa. I'm a truck. Do you? I'm gonna. Treasure. I think. We will. I am. I don't. Where's? Yes. Then. This is about going up to the state house. Trying to rally. I'm. 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 Maybe. Maybe. Here. Maybe. That's. Yeah. But I'm. I think. Right. I'm. She. Oh, I'm. Oh. Ah. Sure. But if it's me too. Oh. Hi. Good to see you.
Good to see you. So. I'm passing these out. These ten one. Can you take a whole pile for position?
Um, yeah.
Okay. I have hundreds and hundreds, so. I have hundreds and hundreds.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, and we are having. This thing on Wednesday. Can we pause up? We're saying. Yeah. And so. Yes. Person is interested. Um. If there's something. Please discuss something. Person is interested in. Um.
Let me have.
Sweet. Okay.
But I'll. I'll.
Yeah. Are you speaking, Robin? Nate? And you know this to have a sign up. Just speak, right? Cool. Sorry. Sorry. Okay. Yeah.
But if I'm. Back up on the one. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I said. I'm. I'm.
Yeah. I know. Oh, yeah.
I see.
I saw. Yeah.
This. I. I'm. Yeah.
I'm. Especially. So. Mike here. I'm. I'm sure. Who want to use that? So.
I'm. I'm.
Yes. Yeah. I mean.
I had. Oh, everyone's. They hold. They. 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 They're all same. They were all white.
We was. Like, one. That much. We were. Yes. Okay.
No. Yeah. You know. I think. I've got. The speaker. So.
So. It's. What happened?
Thank you. Welcome. Again. Also. Yes. One. I have. I guess. It's. So. There we have. Other ones. Yeah. So. I'm. I'm. So. Then. So. I'm.
It's. Chair.
So. We're. Yeah.
Speech. Alright.
Ever. I'm. I don't. I don't.
So. One of the. I'm. This is.
Product. We do. So. Increase.
Success. I have it.
Night. Friday.
Number twelve. There. I have. It. Place. Couple. Bubble. Because I have. I have a close friend. By the chair. They. I. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I.
Listen. Because. It's. So. I must. Yes.
So.
Yeah. 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 No answer? I'm. Not my department. Of course, it's. That's because you work for the state. Never. I'm. Whatever. So. I think. I don't. But, yeah. Test.
He now works. One of these. They're listening. Trying to help. First.
First. You're.
I'm.
Before. No. So. I'm. Yes. If there's. Good. Mike is good. Yourself.
So. 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 We said. When. Like. And. Like. Help. Really. In the. But. All. So. Yes. I'm. What?
Okay, Jen. We're done there.
I'm.
Okay. Yeah.
I'm. Well. I'm. Yeah. Yeah. More about. Yeah. We have. More. Making. Well. Yeah. Oh. Sorry. Yeah.
Yeah.
Come on, sir. Come on. Well. Or. I think. You. That would. No. A minute. I'll. Okay. We can. Bye.
Is this being livestreamed?
Yes. I got.
Can it get higher? I asked. Brother. I wasn't totally sure. They signed you up in the right place. I signed you up to get him too. Right. Yeah. He's going. Wait. It's like. It's like the. The. It's. Like. Life. Yeah. I definitely. Okay. Get started. Everybody here. Okay?
Yes.
All right. Good evening. I'm Chris Duran. This is a little bit. We're here to talk about the fall service changes tonight. I'm going to go over a quick run through of our financial challenges. Kind of where we're at with budget. And then. Ed Brown's going to go through the actual service proposals. And then we'll. We're trying to. Get as much political confidence as we can. So we'll try to do our part. Brief. So everyone gets a chance to talk. For us. Uh, for us historically, revenues just haven't kept up with costs. And it's always been a longstanding issue. I think over the past few years, especially with the funding. We've had an opportunity to kind of. Get away from that for a little bit. But those funds have been exhausted. And after really extensive conversations with. The governor's office and General Assembly. But we just haven't been able to identify. Enough funding to fully close this gap. Uh, we did get fifteen million dollars last year from General Assembly. Along with your apartment to conduct an efficiency study. That study has been completed. It is out. It's on our website. We released it Thursday night. Uh, there is nothing in that study that really closes this gap. But it does give us kind of an idea. What are the most expensive routes to be running? What are the more effective routes? And that is the basis for a lot of what we're discussing today. This session, we received another fifteen million dollars from General Assembly. This time on a permanent basis with two cents of the gas tax being increased. And our general share of the registration fees being increased as well. These funds give Ripta a permanent stream of fifteen million dollars a year going forward. And help cut the deficit in about half. Just to do another run through of where we started. We started with thirty-two million dollar deficit. The new state funding raises that down to seventeen. We've been able to use some of the. Some of the smaller bolts from the efficiency study to get that down. At number seven million dollars. And now we're trying to close the final ten million dollars. And there's always no options. Everybody gets subservice at this point. Uh, we are not at this time proposing fare increase. We are going to the process. And. Are looking to do that possibility. So. Chris. One of the things that I will. Flag that is not in this presentation is that the power transfer program. Has historically operated within three quarters of a mile. In the fixture line. Over the past year, with General Assembly's help, we've been actually operating a pilot. But we are running that statewide. We found a lot of trips were happening just outside of those zones, making transportation very difficult for people. And not an expensive fix for it. So when we're doing this. General Assembly has made that permanent. So if you're a utilizer or anybody you know is using the power transfer program. It will remain as is and unchanged. The one thing I'll. The one thing I'll flag is that we are. We outsource significant amount of trips to taxi providers for that service. As an overflow. So as we're reducing fixture service. It's an opportunity to save some of our drivers. And so we'll be limiting some of the taxi service and doing more of that working house. This slide kind of talks more about the things we're considering as we're working through changes. And we've hired a lot of drivers over the past year. We've helped address the driver shortage. Help improve overall service reliability. And we know that we've got a bunch of retirements coming. So we don't want to find ourselves in a position where if spring, after we reduce the service. We have a driver shortage, we have a bunch of retirements, and services are unreliable. So we're really trying to be thoughtful how we do this. And not just simply bring the easy down. But trying to make sure that whatever service levels we have, we work best for forward to provide. So with that, you know, we again, we use the efficiency study group rankings, which is based off of ridership. Trips per hour. Cost for a trip. And started really there. As you'll see, some of the changes are impacting even the most popular routes. So nothing's really spared in this proposal. I already touched on some of these things. And so we're having these hearings this week. We have two more. Opportunity can be guaranteed on Wednesday. In the meantime, all this feedback, all this information is being sent to the board directors. And posted by our website. Including the livestream. Public comment. If you're not willing to come up or not. Comfortable coming up and speaking in front of the room. You can certainly submit your comments at marketing@ripta.com. Or by call at four oh one. Seven eight four nine five zero zero. Extension one one zero one. Again, all this information will go to the board. Who is reviewing it. We have a tentative board meeting scheduled for this coming Thursday. But ultimately, the current schedule will be that the changes will affect September thirteenth. I'm now going to turn it over to Ed Brown, who is our executive director of scheduling. He can walk you through the actual changes. Ed?
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ed Brown, executive director of service planning and scheduling at Ripta. Yeah. Just want to take you through the changes. I want to be respectful of everyone's time, so we have time to give testimony tonight. So for full route eliminations. Following routes. Are proposed for elimination. Routes twenty-three, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy-three, seventy-five, seventy-six, eighty, eighty-eight, eighty-nine. Flex two thirty-one, flex three zero one. For parking rides. Nine X, twelve X, fifty-nine X, sixty-five X, and ninety-five X. And sixty-one X will be reduced from four round trips to two round trips. Elimination of route segments, so this is a portion of route or deviation of routes one, fourteen, nineteen, twenty-seven, fifty, seventy-one, and ninety-two, and I'll go through those later in the Ripta route information. Well, elimination of all weekend and holiday service routes four, six, thirteen, fourteen, twenty-nine, fifty-five, seventy-one, and Flex two zero three. Saturday service, eighteen, fifty-eight, and sixty-four. And Sunday holiday routes three, sixteen, thirty-five, and sixty-three. So reductions in frequency, so how often the bus comes to the bus stop. Routes one, three, four, six, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, sixty, sixty-four, sixty-six, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-eight, eighty-seven, and ninety-two, and even the R-line. Span of service, so this is the start of the day to the end of the day, first trip, last trip, number of hours that are proposed for reduction, more than ten percent or at least ten percent. It's route seventeen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-seven, thirty, thirty-three, thirty-four, fifty, fifty-one, and ninety-two. So I've just read all the route eliminations, either the full titles of the route. Again, to be respectful of your time, we give both time for testimony, but I'll move on to the second eliminations. So Route one, Eddie, daily service will operate between Oregon Shores and south out of our station, Bristol Place. Service south of the, south of Shores will be on Route fourteen west bay. Service between one A and one thirty-eight, North Kingston and Salt Pond Plaza, and there again, so it'll be eliminated. Route nineteen, service to Creighton Industrial Park will be eliminated. Route twenty-seven, all service will operate between Stop and Shop and downtown Providence. No service on Nebraska Tucket Avenue or George Waterman. Service of Sedale eliminated on that route. Sedale still could be accessed on Route fifty-seven. Route fifty, Douglas, Saturday and Sunday service will enter Shores, no service to Bryant. Route seventy-one, Broad Street, Patucket Ave. This route will now run from Patucket Central Falls Transit Center to Stop and Shop Men Road. All service on Tucket Ave to Job Lot eliminated. Route ninety-two, service between Kennedy Plaza and Route View Place on the east side will be removed from ninety-two and instead operated as a new separate Route ninety-one. Instead, will operate as a, it'll run on weekdays only with service every sixty minutes and no weekend service. Connections to Route ninety-two will be in Kennedy Plaza. Okay, so elimination of weekend service, we went through this, these routes already. So the trip frequencies, this is a lot more detailed. So the R-line, weekend frequency reduced from every fifteen minutes to every twenty minutes all day, and every thirty minutes at night. And that weekday frequency reduced from every ten to eleven minutes to every twelve minutes during the AM and PM peak, and then every fifteen minutes on the midday and every twenty minutes at night. Route one, midday frequency reduced from twenty to thirty-two. Sunday reduced from forty to fifty. Route three, weekday reduced from every forty to every fifty-five minutes. Route four, weekday frequency reduced from every forty to fifty-five minutes. Route six, frequency reduced from every thirty to every sixty. Seventeen and nineteen, weekday frequency reduced, well, increased on the peak, every thirty-four to every thirty minutes, but reduced on the off-peak to every fifty instead of every thirty-four minutes all day and at night. Saturday frequency reduced from fifty to seventy-four minutes, and Sunday frequency reduced from fifty to eighty minutes. Eighteen, peak weekday, weekday frequency reduced from thirty minutes to every sixty. Nineteen, I covered. Route twenty, weekday frequency reduced from fifteen minutes all day to twenty to fifteen minutes peak and twenty minutes midday and every thirty minutes at night. Weekend frequency reduced from every thirty to every forty-five. Route twenty-one, weekday and Saturday service will be reduced from every forty to every fifty, Sunday from every fifty to every sixty. Twenty-two, weekday reduced from every thirty-five to every fifty. Twenty-seven, weekday frequency reduced from every thirty to thirty-two. And Saturday from every forty to forty, forty-five. Same for Route twenty-eight, those are routes operating tandem. Route thirty, Saturday reduced from every forty to every fifty, Sunday reduced from every fifty to every sixty. Routes thirty-one and fifty-six, weekday reduced from every twenty minutes to every twenty-five minutes during the day and every thirty-five at night. Saturday frequency reduced from every eighteen to every twenty-five to twenty-seven minutes during the day and every fifty minutes at night, and Sunday reduced from every twenty-two to thirty-five minutes. Routes thirty-two and thirty-four, weekday frequency reduced from every sixty to every eighty. Route thirty-three, weekday frequency reduced from every thirty to every forty, and Saturday reduced from every forty to every sixty. Route fifty, weekday reduced from twenty-five to forty-five, Saturday from thirty to fifty to fifty-three, and Sunday reduced from forty-five to every fifty to fifty-five minutes. Fifty-one, fifty-four, weekday frequency reduced from forty-five to fifty, for fifty-four, forty-five to every sixty. Saturday reduced from thirty to forty-five, for fifty-four, and Sunday reduced from sixty to seventy. Route fifty-four, Sunday reduced from sixty to eighty. Route fifty-five, weekday reduced from thirty-five to forty-five. Fifty-seven, weekday reduced from thirty-five to forty-five, Saturday reduced from thirty-two to forty, fifty-five to sixty minutes, Sunday reduced from every forty to every fifty-five. Sixty, weekday frequency reduced from thirty minutes all day to thirty minutes during the AM and PM peak, and then every thirty-five minutes during the day and every sixty minutes at night. Saturday reduced from every thirty to thirty-five to every thirty-five to forty minutes, and Sunday reduced from every forty to fifty minutes to every sixty minutes. Sixty-four has been reduced, well, is proposed to be reduced, from nine round trips to two round trips, including the naval undersea warfare service. Route sixty-six, weekdays reduced from every thirty to every forty-five during the day, every sixty minutes at night. Saturday reduced from every fifty-five to sixty. And Route seventy-one, frequency from every forty to forty-eight. Seventy-two, weekday reduced from twenty minutes all day to twenty minutes during the AM and PM peak and every twenty-four minutes during the midday. Saturday frequency reduced from thirty to thirty to thirty, forty, and then Sunday reduced from thirty to every forty-eight. Seventy-eight, frequency reduced from every thirty-five to every forty-five. Eighty-seven, reduced from every forty to every eighty, and Route ninety-two will run the current alignment between Kennedy Plaza and Burnout College, same frequency on weekday, thirty minutes as it is today. Sunday frequency will be reduced from every thirty to fifty-five. Spanish services that are reduced by at least ten percent. I already went through these, but we'll throw them again. Seventeen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-seven, thirty, thirty-three, thirty-four, fifty, fifty-one, ninety-two. Additional proposed changes, currently the Route twenty-eight terminates at Stop and Shop on Edward Avenue in Johnston. That location is closed. We are moving it over to Job Lot on Harford Avenue. Route thirty-two, weekday span be increased to match with thirty-four, which is its sister route going to Seekonk Square. Route sixty-three, frequency, this is an efficiency thing, we had an efficiency study, so we were able to increase frequency from forty-five to every forty. No, no additional resources spent there. Route Flex two eighty-one, number of vehicles decreased from three vehicles all day to two vehicles all day in the city of Old Socket. So our timeline, so we began public hearings last Monday. Our final public hearing comment period closes, that'll be on Wednesday, August sixth. August seventh, we have a special board meeting. All this testimony and all previous hearings will be presented to them, and they will then vote on the proposed changes. August eighteenth, the drivers begin selecting their work per their collective bargaining agreement, and September thirteenth would be the day these proposed changes would go into effect. So temporary disruption period, so due to anticipated layoffs, Ripta's canceled any upcoming fixture of training classes, coupled with operator retirements, so it'll be more frequent instances of lost service beginning immediately. These disruptions are temporary. Riders should check the transit app to see if a trip has been canceled and plan alternate ways to get to their destination. Once proposed changes are implemented, service will become stable and reliable again. This is the public hearing schedule. We only have one more, one set of hearings after this. At Barrington? Okay, so we'll get to public comment. So given the amount of people who would like to testify, we like to keep it to three minutes per person, just to be respectful for everyone who'd like to get their thoughts heard tonight. Comments unrelated to the hearings will not be submitted for public record. Again, comments must be received by the closing of this day on August sixth. Additional comments may be submitted in writing, either with the form provided at the sign-in table or emailing us at marketing@ripta.com. Copies of our Title VI safety analysis are available at the table and are required in our day-to-day impact statements. Ripta's Title VI program is available at ripta.com. So, the speaker.
Hello, the way I believe, um, I still believe you agree with me. I believe that Ripta is, fuck, hurt, okay, economy, which, the rest of my story, rely with this goal. I still get opposed, and it, and all cuts, and I ask, oh, rely with this, they go to learn, what's the science? I went to work together and find a permanent fix, not these, baby fixes with these cuts. Fight, fight for money. I know it's somewhere, I know I don't work in the highlights, but believe me, it's gonna be the forty percent more rises, people, I go to work with these cuts, people, I go with cops, they might lose their families or work. What could happen then? Forget, I strongly ask you to please invest in reliance and Ripta and make what I'm for. Thank you.
Great Doug Arien, the first speaker. And Kristen Q would be on the next after, after Grant.
Before Grant speaks, just real quick, I want to remind everybody that there is a three-minute time limit on speakers. We've got a lot of folks assigned up to speak. And if we want to get through everybody, then we really need to limit everybody to three minutes or less. I'll be using my phone as a timer, if they ever go off, just to ring, not, not, you know. You hear that? Please, please end your talk. Okay, thank you.
Kristen?
Yeah.
Thank you. Next would be Amy Woodin.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for coming. First of all, I'd just like to give a quick shout out to the members of Ripta for being here and to supplying the great service that you do for us. I am a lifelong Ripta rider, and everybody's situation is different for why they take the bus rather than driving, or even not have a car, or whatever your personal reasons are. But I think it's safe to say that everybody in this room knows what risks are going to be for all of us riders if services are cut. People will lose jobs, they're not going to make it to medical appointments, and all the other reasons our daily lives will be impacted, which we've stated multiple, multiple times, which I think is a big frustration for a lot of us riders. I feel like we're chasing our tail at this point, and just, I mean, how many different ways can we say, please don't cut funds? So, um, also, I'd just like to also say that the financial situation for all of us riders is extremely impactful, because if we switch over to live shares like Uber and Lyft, it costs quadruply amount of money to get to where we're going, and it is, and let's see. So I just want to say that, um, that we need to try to convince government and the public transportation officials how important it is that the whole state keeps mobilized, and as long as we're being mobilized, we improve the economy, and it all keeps us connected as a community. And I feel like we're personally not asking Ripta to impose brand-new services that are impossible to implement. I think we do, however, need things to remain the way they are, so most of us can just survive on a daily basis.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amy Woodin. I'm the chair of Rhode Island Transit Riders. Um, I just wanted to thank Ripta for being here tonight. I've been to a lot of these hearings over these years, and I can't recall the last time a CEO came, let alone explained some of what was going on. You know, Ripta took care of us during the pandemic. They didn't cut ridership. When we needed more, more drivers, we advocated for them. Ripta gave it to them, us to them, and, you know, the efficiency site shows that Ripta's doing a good job. The problem is that Governor McGee did not allocate enough funding in his budget, and I have three words for you, McGee, McGee, McGee. You've got a flyer, ran along his hand, sees that, it's got McGee's number on here, call him. You've called him once, call him again. You know, if you don't want to talk to someone, call at night and leave a message. People are super nice on the phone, they want to take your call, two, 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 two oh eight oh. So I, I live in Princeton, but I, everything I do is in Providence. I work in South Providence. I'm an ELSL teacher. I ride two buses to get to work, and I'm worried that with the connections I have to make in the reduced service on the twenty, twenty-two and R-line, I might have to take Lyft to work, which I could afford to do, unlike a lot of people, but it costs four hundred dollars a month, and then I just keep living paycheck to paycheck. And most people do not have that option. What people who drive cars don't get is that we decide our lives around not driving. We chose to live somewhere because it has a bus line that we depend off. We pick a job that we can take a bus to. We can't just move or get another job if our line is stuck. And we take a lot of lines besides the ones that we commute on. I really could be taking any line when I go somewhere. People have many reasons for not driving, such as disability, old age, or environmental reasons. And a lot of people cannot afford a car, they cannot afford Lyft, they have, they may not be able to bicycle or walk, and they have literally no option. We need to call the governor, we need to tell him that he needs to find funding before Ripta now. Otherwise, we're going to be stuck in our homes, people will lose their jobs, some won't be able to catch their college or leave campus in the weekend, some people won't be able to access social services, health services, mental health services, go to church on Sunday, and have resources for their children. Governor McGee was the one who didn't fund Ripta in his budget. We asked the governor to do the right thing and give Ripta funding, so that over forty thousand riders are thrown under the bus.
Mary Tyrance?
Great, time. I want to finish, I want to follow this person. All right. Hello, everybody. My name is Maddie Harris. I'm resident of Providence, and I moved here about a year and a half ago, and one of the reasons I moved is because I knew there would be a bus line. I'm here today to call on our city and the fearless Providence leaders to strongly oppose the Ripta service changes and pervasive cuts to over fifty affected routes. I'm also here to advocate for our young people in the community, young and old, such as those that use the fifty-five route on holidays and weekends for various, various experiences, like those students at Providence College, or students from Bryant University who use the fifty to get to and from campus. Conveniently, many of these students are on summer break and may not be aware of these changes that their campuses may need. Many on college campuses, including me, who works there, cannot have personal cars due to how much it costs to go to college or just live in the state or anywhere to be there. Meaning that many of our new students in Providence have to rely on the public transit to get to and from. Minimizing the service to PC on holidays and weekends will only isolate the students and communities who need to commute to get off campus. I cannot speak for the population at Bryant University, but eliminating service at their site could create more barriers for those commuting in and around. Moreover, there are other numerous populations affected by this proposed change, which you're all here, so I know that you're probably affected. Even if you're not, I'm still glad you're here. We have folks who take the Ripta beaches that our Ocean State is so proud of, or our Brown University health campuses for medical events, which we're also really proud of. We have folks coming and going to the airport or communities in South County or Boston. We have students and elderly and those limited by ability who use the Ripta. People that serve you your Dunkin' Donuts in the morning are using the Ripta. The ones that clean your public restrooms are using the Ripta. The ones that advise your college students or take care of your taxes for you, they are using the Ripta. Everybody uses Ripta. I don't care what the numbers are. The people that ride two different routes, different routes, should just take a college course at CC, or I, or Rick, or the family having to bus to the nearest grocery store because there's no other place in their neighborhood to go. Please, the proposed cuts to Ripta affects everyone. Furthermore, and I swear this will be quick, it's embarrassing to live and work in a place governed by the shared idea that we are a place for all, regardless of status and ability. The cuts to Ripta will not only affect my morning commute, which at this point is at least my worries, will only continue to increase the gap between those that are struggling and those that are not. To those seated in this room and as we hear the public out, I'm begging you to oppose these unfathomable cuts to Ripta. If you want to be for the people, you will not cut this, and it will not let the effects of poor planning, inflation, or any other budget deficit excused trickle down and affect those who rely on the social services such as Ripta. I ask that you think about how this massive cut could have an everlasting effect on Ripta's success going forward. I ask that you listen to the public, the ones before and after me, who have shared their own stories and advocated for the public transportation system for all Rhode Island, but Rhode Island residents, we all deserve it. Thank you so much.
Liza. Next will be Kat Heimer.
Hi, everyone. My name is Liza Birkin. I'm the board president of the Providence Streets Coalition and organizer with the Savers of the Campaign. And I'm here to repeat my comments from the noon, the noon hearing, and from the South Kingston hearing, and from last year's hearings. God, it sucks to be in this room with all of you. I love seeing you on the bus, and I hate seeing you here. I don't want to be here. It is insane how they make us beg and drawl for basic services. This should not be the case, and basic services that are an economic benefit for our state. So I'm not going to take up a lot of time, but I just want to repeat what Amy said. Please, whatever you're going to say here tonight in this room, please call the governor and just repeat the exact same thing. Let that voicemail happen. Let the email happen, let the social media comments happen. He needs to hear from you, and your state reps and your senators need to hear from you. We all, we need to hear from each other, and we're here in this room together in solidarity, and the power of the people, this is what is going to stop the cuts. Okay? So please call, please come to Kennedy Plaza at five PM on Wednesday night, so we can be together in solidarity, in at the bus hub with other riders, and call again and stop this, and then please come Thursday morning to the board meeting, nine thirty AM on Elmwood, to tell the board of Ripta to vote no on these cuts. Because once that goes through, if that goes through, it's not going to go through. The powers of people can stop this, and that's what we're here to do tonight, and we have all week to stop it. So keep showing up. Thank you so much. I'll see you on the bus.
Matt Thomas will be next.
Sorry. My name is Gallo Heimer. I'm sixteen years old, and my little pig starts, but I commute to Providence and East Providence daily without a car for a while. School can see my presence. I've been a Ripta rider for years, and will receive my driver's license in the fall, but as my family cannot afford the elevated insurance rates associated with new drivers, I will continue to be dependent on Ripta's services. Thank you. It currently takes me an hour and forty-five minutes to get to school on a fifteen-minute transfer between the sixty-six and thirty-three. The trip I take every week takes over two hours with a thirty-minute transfer between the sixty-six and the fifty-four. A common occurrence during the transfer tracks is missing the sixty-six by seconds or minutes, and happen to wait half an hour to an hour for the next one, which will happen much more frequently if it's like the thirty-three, are reduced in frequency by even the proposed ten minutes. Frequency reductions will make getting where I need to go much harder. Likely involving longer transfer times that extend my trips to unreasonable times, and fewer options that will impede my ability to leave and arrive. With the, with the weekend elimination of the fourteen, trips to Newport triple from a two-hour to a six-hour round trip. The elimination of the sixty-nine will completely cut me off from beaches, friends, and the library I use, which is the only transit accessible home in my area. I'd like to think of myself as a patient friends rider, as I'm quite used to taking trips, taking three times as long as driving. However, I will not be so patient and forgiving as to say so on these service developments. I love Rhode Island, and I'm proud to be from here. Our state is doing a great disservice to its citizens in choosing not to fund Ripta, an absolutely vital institution in the lives of workers and students like me who do not want to drive, who cannot afford to. Transit, transit riders are often the most vulnerable in our communities. Take it from someone with a two-hour commute, we do not need nor deserve more complications and restrictions in the ways we get around.
Pablo Calderon will be next. Pablo Calvaro will be next.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank all the people of Ripta for being here. It's great to see you, Chris. Thank you, Ed. Unfortunate circumstances. I'm here in my capacity as a rider. I am also a labor leader on Brown's campus, helping represent her for five thousand workers at both Brown University and Brown University Health. We have hundreds of workers and students who depend on these services. I personally depend on the ninety-two. It's nice that it comes every thirty minutes and makes it usable as a route. Having that cut off in the middle of town requiring a transfer to get to Federal Hill, not being able to go get groceries on the weekends is going to be devastating for me. These service cuts don't need to go into effect. There is funding out there. It can be found. I decided over the weekend, some may know me from writing a funding study last year on one of these hearings. Here we are again. I do have a day job and a second job and also a thesis that I'm working on, but I decided this weekend to spend some time and write a new funding study for Ripta, which was published this morning. You may have seen it, probably haven't heard it. I have some copies here if anyone's curious. But I have come up with a dozen new ways that have yet to be proposed to fund Ripta that the governor can redirect money. Most of them can be done through purely executive actions and done on short term and short notice to get this service cut delayed or put off forever. You need to take action and call your governor, as other people have already said. But it's also important to consider, we need further sustainable funding in the long term, but we need some sort of emergency gap now. We can redirect funds from other programs from federal money that is existing within R I D O or allocated to bond measures. There's money sitting that could be had through spare increases to programs that currently, my own institution, Brown pays less than any other school in the state for the U pass program. We could increase that. Brown could voluntarily decide to do so out of the goodness of its heart and its community. There's also, I'm withholding my own thoughts on the agreement. Brown has signed a fifty million dollar agreement from the federal government to give money to workforce development programs. Workforce development programs become much more difficult when there is not bus service and people cannot do job training and then get to work. Part of this money through an agreement between the state and Ripta and Brown University could be allocated to both the job training programs and those job training programs could then provide free Ripta passes to all participants to help ensure they have the mobility to get to work. But that is only doable if we avoid these cuts and so that action needs to be taken now. I'd like to thank you all for your time and hopefully together we can avoid these cuts by Thursday and continue riding the bus. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Pablo Calvaro. I live in Providence. I've lived here most of my life and I am a teacher, a high school teacher up in Blue Socket. Public transit is my only form of transportation. I've relied on Ripta most of my life, from high school to now. I went to college in a place with no public transportation and I was so excited to come back to Providence and people would ask why. And I said, the buses. The buses and Ripta have always been there for me and they're here for me now and I hope they're there for me in the future. And it's not even just for me. As a teacher, I ride the bus with my students. I see them almost every day. They see me and go, Mr. Calvaro rides the bus? That's cool. They like buses now. And I hope they love them. I take the thirty-one and then transfer to the fifty-four and that is a very close margin of transfer. So I get to work on time, but many of my students will be like, oh, Mr. Calvaro, I'm sorry I'm late. And it's because they missed their transfer by a minute. And that's going to get even worse in the future. It's, it's something that needs immediate resolution. And just today I got a message from a former student saying, I was planning on going to Rick in the fall, but now I'm not sure if I can commute from Blue Socket to Providence. And we're all here today to make sure that I can continue working, you can continue working, and the future of Rhode Island exists and has their access to education. That is all I have to say. Thank you.
Ian Westcott. And next will be Lee Montal.
Sorry, I'm putting it in a tall mode. Hi, everybody. My name is Ian Westcott. I live in Elmhurst in Providence, roughly that way. I'm a homeowner. My wife and I share a car. I ride a bicycle and I also ride the bus. I know there are lots of folks who rely on the bus because they don't have a choice. And for those of you here tonight who fit that description, I want to thank you all for speaking up about how severely these cuts will impact you. I don't know why that argument hasn't landed with the governor or the general assembly so respectfully and hopefully without overshadowing your viewpoints, I'm going to try and offer a different viewpoint. I have the privilege to choose and I frequently choose to ride the bus. I commute to Boston and when I do, I take the fifty-five or the fifty-seven to the commuter rail. I also take those buses to the mall to buy clothes for my son. I often go downtown to Maruichi for lunch or to Federal Hill or Fox Point for dinner and I love that I can walk to the ninety-two to get there. For me, having more choices makes a big difference in my quality of life. It's why I chose to live in a place with more options to choose from. I grew up in Rhode Island, not in a transit accessible part of Rhode Island. I lived in Boston. I lived in New York City. I went seventeen years without a car. I came back to start a family. But in simple terms, even though I'm a car owner, the bus helps me earn money and the bus helps me spend money. And I don't see parking and traffic as insurmountable obstacles to going out. I see them as an opportunity to make a different choice. And that's the reason why, that I have to offer for why we need to invest more in Ripta, because we shouldn't be making these choices harder for people. We should be making them easier for people. We shouldn't be here fighting this death spiral that's being brought about under the misguided premise of austerity. We shouldn't even have to fight to keep service as is because we should be expanding it so more people have more choices to use transit and to contribute to the state's economy because transit is an economic engine. Every dollar invested in transit comes back through economic activity. It makes it easier for businesses and academic institutions and healthcare and research institutions to attract talent. Are you listening to me, governor? It increases property values. It promotes housing development. It broadens the tax base. Oh, yeah. And it also increases equity and economic opportunity for low-income and disadvantaged Rhode Islanders. But hey, if that's not enough for you, then maybe some of those other reasons I listed are helpful in understanding why it's essential to fund Ripta. Thank you.
Next will be Robin Pudanis.
Well, I don't know how I could follow that. My name is Lev Poplaw. I'm a resident of Cranston and I'm also the lead organizer of the municipal Rhode Island. Mrs. Durand, Mr. Brown, I just want to say thank you for being here, for listening to all this. I can tell by the way your shoulders are slumped and how upset you were reading all the changes that if it was up to you, you would find the money and you would make sure that these routes continue to serve the people of Rhode Island. On a personal level, I am sick to death of the people who can least afford it, who most need social services, having to pay the price for those people who are unwilling to. Whether it be elders getting to their doctor's appointments or the supermarkets, whether it be a working-class person who needs Ripta to get to their job on time, or a student like that young man, where did he go? Who takes an hour and forty-five minutes every day just so we can get to school. These people are heroes. These people are trying to just make the best of their life that they can and they need you. And they need Ripta. And our city needs good, quality public transportation. I was, I'm not from Rhode Island. I was born and raised in Philadelphia, a city with some of the best public transportation on the planet. I couldn't even imagine what people who use Ripta regularly go through. I don't use it regularly, but I do use it. At the times that I've needed it, I've been grateful that it was there for me. So like Amy said before me, and what was your name?
Liza.
Liza said before me, there is an answer here and the answer is up in the state house of the governor. He has the power to hold the legislature back into emergency session to find the money as that gentleman, where did he go? Who just spoke a few minutes ago with his brilliant new financial study. He's already found the money. What we need is the governor to do what you need and what the citizens of Rhode Island need, which is to fund public transportation. I mean, like I said before, I am sick and tired of it. The wealthiest among us skate along and those who most need grovel just so they can get by. How the hell are you supposed to lift yourself up into a better life if you struggle just to get to work every day or to school every day? It's not right and it needs to end and we can't end it. So I would encourage you to call the governor, to email the governor, to everybody, and I mean everybody, and to tell everybody you know. Luckily, I have a pretty large network. One thing I could tell you is in the last four days, twenty-five hundred people, because we've reached out to them, have done that and it's not enough. If the governor hears from ten thousand or fifteen thousand or twenty-five thousand people in the next twenty-four hours, hopefully he will be smart enough to know that he can't ignore the people any longer. Thank you very much.
John Welch will be next.
Hi, my name is Robin and I live in the hood. I live in Providence. I live in Onlyville right now. Thank you for your hiring initiatives. It absolutely has made a difference. I was sitting outside with someone in Onlyville yesterday and this other person remarked, wow, there's a lot of buses for a Sunday. And I said, well, that's because they hired some new folks. Because Sunday became a day that you tried not to do anything. Saturday maybe, Sunday like forget about. You're going to wait an hour for each bus both ways. So it's like, you know, four hours of waiting and maybe two hours of what you went to do. Before I retired, I actually worked for the Department of Human Services. So I had direct knowledge as a social worker and also as a manager of the SNAP and medical units of what it takes to go to school, to drop off kids, sometimes eight buses a day. If you live in a city that's doable, if you're trying to get into the city and then do that, it's, it's almost impossible. And so to cut buses, you're cutting people's lifeline. So my saying of the day is, it's not a bus ride, it's a lifeline. It literally is a lifeline. And I think the governor needs to think of it in terms of that. It's not a ride, it's a lifeline. It's how people get to school, it's how they buy food. If you live in a food desert, you're, you know, you're, you're being predators, you know, the corner store thing. Then you spend up your SNAP money, then you don't have enough to stretch even that much through the month. So it's really critical. A doctor's appointment, it's not always just a doctor's appointment. It's a senior citizen in February, maybe they'll be cold, that also has to get to the lab and then they have a follow-up. So it may not be one appointment. It may be some kind of physical therapy where they're going repeatedly. So, you know, it's not a bus ride, it's a lifeline. And I have direct knowledge of what it takes for someone to do school and then try to do a job search and drop off kids, literally eight buses a day. So if those buses are cut, is that even possible anymore? If someone is in an industrial park where the buses are being cut, are they going to have a job anymore? It, it looks like it's going to be a situation where even in the city, people are going to be walking for quite a ways to get to work, which folks in more rural or suburban areas have always, you know, had to deal with. We're, we're a little more fortunate in the city. So, you know, the bus is really critical. You know, the R line as an example, there's a hospice on that line. I can only imagine what it's like to live in an outlined area and you're trying to get to someone who's dying and you can't get there anymore unless you walk to it. And that, I'm not trying to be history on it. I think that's a reality. It, it's not a bus ride, it is a lifeline. If you can't get a ride and you can't ride a scooter and you can't afford a ride share and the bus doesn't come, then you have to walk. And in the kind of weather that we've had as a league, that's really not possible. You can't walk very far amidst ninety-five degrees out and you sure can't do it with the kind of rainstorms that we get anymore. So, you know, it's, it's, it's a much more serious matter than I think the governor thinks it is. You know, if you can't get the job, then you don't pay your bills. Can't pay your bills, then you might lose your home, an affordable one at that. Because if you lose your apartment right now in Rhode Island, good luck getting one you can still afford. Probably not going to happen. It's like trying to move to Manhattan right now in Rhode Island. So, you know, it becomes a housing issue also potentially. And, you know, I'm going to say honestly, I take the bus a lot and I could buy a car, but I don't want to because I'm retired and it's just going to sit and a lot of things I have to go start it up and all this stuff and cleaning up. And I don't want to deal with that and I don't want to pay for gas and I don't want to deal with the environmental issues right now either. But I do have the option of a ride share. So if the rates go up and the bus isn't even coming as often as it should.
Sorry to interrupt, but you.
Do I want to take a ride share for two dollars more? Maybe. And that's where Ripta is going to lose money. So that's something you want to think about. Thank you.
John Welch, RN and engineering degree. Three percent of Rhode Island's population uses public transit. That's why you have limited political power. I've been pushing for the extension of the R line, which has twenty-five percent of the total state ridership. I'm proposing going through Central Falls with twenty-two thousand residents to Stop and Shop Cumberland Mall. A hundred, three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars would be required to convert the seventy-one route scheduled to a best scheduled in the state R line. And with that, you'd be allowing those people to work evening and night shifts. It's an economic improvement. The last bus serving Central Falls is six P M. Eastern Standard Time. The Central Fall, Centralville Bank Stadium game doesn't start till seven P M. I'll go to the Rhode Island soccer dean, manager, or president and suggest that if we use the remaining home games and we can get ten percent of that most populated dead city to attend your home games at sixteen dollars per seat, that maybe it would be worth thirty-five hundred for you briefly hiring me. Because I'm only living on social security. I haven't owned a car in fifteen years. I use Ripta exclusively and it's a matter of principle. I was making fifty, seventy thousand dollars more as a nurse before I was forced to retire at seventy-five. I'm seventy-seven now, pretty good athlete coming from Detroit from that. And I'm saying that this is a good organization that's just underfunded, but I will say you have to have your machines reading the cards and scanning cell phones because I, ten percent of the time on the R line, they're not working. And that's inexcusable. That person should be working night shift and when the buses aren't driving so that we don't lose revenue. Thanks a million. I hope we win, but it's, I think affordable transportation is more important than affordable housing now. Thanks and I appreciate that because I'm a pretty good fighter and I'd like to continue fighting with you.
Hi, my name is Randall Rose. I am part of another bus rider group, the Kennedy Plaza Resilience Coalition, and I'm glad to see another of other people from my coalition here. I'm from Providence. So a lot of people have made many good points already. I don't need to repeat a lot, but, you know, people have been asking, why are the politicians doing this? Why are they cutting the bus funding and when they know what impact it's having? I mean, I, I do really appreciate the ordinary politicians, the state reps and state senators who have been supporting bus funding. A lot of them get it. But in, in this state, the real decisions are made not by the rank and file state reps and senators, they're made by the House Speaker, the Senate President, and the governor. They're the ones who make the decisions about money. Ripta doesn't get any say. The people at the top of the state house make the decisions. And the way they work is even if they hear that people need some Ripta or some other service, they try shortchanging it. They try giving less money than people need and they see if there's any backlash or outcry. And if there's not much of an outcry, then they don't have to get more money in future. But if there is a lot of outcry, then they'll put the money back, they'll restore the money. And that's what we have to do because they always like to experiment with that. I mean, they're, they're not a sense, they look like they're not listening to what the people want because they don't react as fast as the regular state reps and state senators, but they're just holding back and seeing what they can get away with. So I think people really need to call the governor, the House Speaker, and the Senate President and ask other people to call too. The more calls, the better. And their phone numbers are on these flyers I've been passing out. And you should also call your own state rep and state senator. And I put a link on here to where you can find out the contact info for your state rep and state senator. When you contact your state rep, tell them to contact the Speaker of the House. Tell them to ask the Speaker of the House for enough money to keep Ripta going, permanent funding so we don't have bus cuts. When you contact your state senator, tell them to contact the Senate, to ask the Senate President to make sure there's enough money. Because that's the way decisions get made. The House Speaker and the Senate President aren't chosen by the voters, but they do have to listen to your state rep and your state senator if you contact them. So that's worth doing. Yeah, they say the decision's going to be made Thursday at the Ripta board meeting. Thursday is not the important day. I mean, even regardless of what happens on Thursday, it's going to come down to how much pressure. pressure there is on the top state leaders. So even if we get something on Thursday we don't like, we can keep the pressure going. We may have to keep fighting in the weeks after Thursday, before these cuts are scheduled to go into effect and still be canceled. Or we may have to fight the State House the following year and the General Assembly to get more funding. But don't be discouraged, whatever happens on Thursday. And if on Thursday, the state leaders say, yeah, we're gonna give a little more money, there won't be quite as much cuts, we're not gonna give up. Let's keep fighting if that happens. And so you gotta make sure that none of these cuts happen. And also, it is worth joining bus rider groups because they pay a lot, politicians pay a lot more attention if there are bus riders groups, and you know there are three of them here. There's the Kennedy Plaza Resilience Coalition that I'm in, Rhode Island Transit Riders, Save Ripta, you've had speakers from all of them. They're all good groups, I recommend joining all of them because they all can help. So, please continue fighting and encourage other people to call because, you know, the politicians like to act like they're not listening to us, but they can't ignore us because they have an election coming up and we have to show that they're gonna lose votes if they end up making cuts, they're gonna have all these devastating consequences. So tell them about the problems, but also make clear that your votes are gonna depend on this, or that you're gonna remember this when the election comes. So thank you.
Gracie? And then next would be Gillian Hubbard.
So, when did we run into this hearing? It was suggested that we come in and tell our story. The last thing I wanted to do is tell my story for a few reasons. First of all, it's my own business. I'm not here to tell everyone about my personal business. But also because I'm not here for my bus route, I'm for your bus route, your bus route, your bus route, your bus route. Okay? They wanna divide us. You want the 31, you want the 34, you want the 54. It doesn't work unless it all works. Who cares if I can get to my job if you can't get to yours? And then we live in a state where people can't get around. It affects everyone. It's a collective effort. And, you know, they say, this is gonna affect bus riders, and there's this many people who ride the bus. Ripta doesn't affect bus riders. Ripta affects everybody, okay? There's one less car on the road, that's one less parking spot. Even more so, that is the person, it might be your emergency room doctor, it might be your teacher, it might be your lawyer, it might be your kid. Okay? So even if any individual person isn't riding Ripta, it affects everyone. And there's one other area that Ripta is extremely important that I haven't heard mentioned yet, but Ripta reduces drunk driving, impaired driving, and distracted driving. I don't know what money we're giving to drunk driving prevention. Transit, transit is the answer, okay? But I can't get home after 8:00 PM. I'm not drinking during the day. And we get up and we say, okay, I mean, no shame if you are. But also, we have to get up and say, oh, I'm here for work, I'm here to go to church. Fine, that's awesome, I want you to go to work, but I also want you to go to a hookup. Okay? We don't need to ask just for social service. This is a right. This is not just for poor people who can't afford a car. And it's not just for people who aren't able, right, to drive. That's me. But still, it's for everyone, it's for all people. We've gotten up and we've said this many, many times, nobody wants cuts. No one has ever gotten up here, never, and said, I want cuts. I've never heard it. Has anyone ever heard it? No. We want three things: better connectivity, better reliability, and care. We wanna care for each other, we want you to care about us, and we want the governor to care about all of us. Okay? So, I'm not up here to say that I deserve or my bus ride deserves more than anyone else. It's about all of us, it's about people who ride the bus, people who don't ride the bus, pretty much anyone who's alive. Cutting the bus is really, really short-term. It's shooting ourselves in the foot. It's going to cost more in the long run, whether it's for loss of jobs, more homeless people, all of these different issues that are gonna come up. It's all gonna come and bite us in the ass later if we don't fund it now. Pay now or pay later. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Gillian Hubbard and I took the bus here. I'll be quick. I am almost halfway through a six-week term of service as a grand juror, which involves taking the bus to the courthouse every day. And I'm happy to do it, I'm happy to take this time away from my life and away from my job to do my civic duty, I'm happy to sit on this jury, but I do rely on the bus to get downtown. And I am lucky enough to have a car, to have the privilege to afford a car, even though half of the time it's in the shop because it's a piece of trash. I could drive, but I don't want to. The roads are so treacherous, there's always land closures, there's always an accident, there's always traffic. And then if you get where you're going alive, you still have to park. I don't want to do it. I want to keep taking the bus, I love the bus. Stop the cuts. Thank you.
Jerry Nevis-Davison?
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you, sorry.
It's all right.
Then next would be David Salzillo.
Hello, my name is Jerry and I am a, I represent Apsy, which stands for Advocates, People Supporting Employment First, Employment First, and pro resident of Providence soon. I will be moving to Cumberland, which brings me to why I'm here tonight. So, with the routes being cut, especially the 75, it's gonna make it very difficult for me to get to my job, because I have to take three buses just to get to work, where I go. And there's no guarantee that I'm gonna have to get to my second dirt bus, because I'm gonna have to wait at least 30 or 40 minutes. All I'm asking is not only for the governor, but for Ripta to recommend a solution to help all of us, or else we're, for the reason why we're here tonight, we're gonna have to recommend finding someone else who can do the job. So if the governor wants our vote, wants our vote, he really needs to step up his game, or we have to find someone else who's working or doing the job.
Next would be Justice Gaines. No, you're up. You're David, right?
Yeah. Hello, everyone. My name is David Salzillo and I'm a lifelong resident of Providence, Rhode Island. And I was asked to come up here and tell what I know. And here's what I know. First, I'd like to thank Ripta for being here and all that. But what I know is that there's a lot of lines being cut here entirely, just being entirely cut out. I know that my line isn't one of them. I know that my line, in fact, is one of the lines that's being affected the least in this whole situation. But I also know that there's a lot of people that have been homeless and they use the bus to get just two hours of sleep each night, just to get that little bit of rest. And I know that there's so many other people, there's so many other stories, we've heard some of them here. And, look, I don't need to tell any of you this. What we see here is a group of people tied together only by the knowledge that public transportation is a basic necessity. It is a basic necessity. And at the end of the day, what we're doing here now is we're looking at all the investments that we try to make in our people. And what our government has said is that this, this basic necessity, and not getting rid of tax cuts for the rich that have been going back for decades, these are the investments that we choose to put aside. And to be honest with you, that's been the story of this entire country for the past three decades now. And look where it has gotten us. Look at where we're at right now. Are we happy with the world that we're living in? Not at all, not at all. You can see it across the political spectrum. Nobody is happy. Everybody is feeling like they're gonna crack at any moment. That pressure, that pressure. And through that pressure, by the way, Ripta has been there. Through the pandemic, Ripta has been there. Through so many other crises that we've had in our lives, Ripta has been there. And I can only say one more thing. We see the people here and we see the people who are not here. But even the people who are not here are people that depend on Ripta without even knowing it. Because beyond what everybody else has said, what about the people who don't know it, but they're gonna have their car break down in two or three months? Where are they gonna go? They're gonna use the bus. And when September comes around, those people, whenever those cars break down, are gonna be taking a hike a lot of the time, especially on Sundays, especially on weekends. And I really hope, I know that you guys are fighting a good fight in every way that you can, but I really hope that, one, us the people will stand up and give the governor help, just to put it in plain English, and to give everybody help that is in charge of this. But I also hope that, at some point, the governor, the leaders have to have a heart. We have had decades of tax cuts for the rich, and to be honest with you, that, my friends, is expenses that have not caught up with revenue. And that's what I think about this. But what do I know? Thank you.
Next would be Bill Massey. Will you...
Guys, for everything the last speaker just said, my name is Justice Gaines. I am a resident of Southside Providence. I'm on the Providence Sustainability Commission as well as Work for Sustifier, where our participatory action research has shown that women of color and non-binary people of color in Rhode Island are pressed for time, pressed for cash, can barely make their bills, and this would only add to that burden for many of our members. But today, I'm not here to speak as part of Sustifier, I'm here to speak as a resident and as a frequent Ripta rider about how these cuts will impact the livelihoods and the lives of so many Rhode Islanders. As you've heard before, it's gonna stop people from getting to work, from going to appointments, from going to the laundromat, getting their groceries, going to activities, going to parks, going to businesses, schools, universities, shelters, service, church, their own family, and it's gonna impact their drivers too are gonna get cut. And all of this is gonna have a major impact on our economy. We will see this impact, Rhode Island's broader economy, we will see revenues drop, we will see businesses close, businesses, not even just the big ones, but the ones owned and run by Rhode Islanders. And it's not gonna make anything more efficient, it's simply gonna make it harder to live in this state that already has a housing crisis, that already has a transportation crisis, and that already decides it does not want to invest in working-class people on a regular basis. We're also gonna see the health impacts in terms of cost of this, because more cars on the road is going to affect our young people and our immunocompromised people. I live in Southside, Southside and Washington Park are within the 99 percentile of asthma in the country already. And this is certainly not gonna help. So the impacts on our economy, the impacts on our environment, the impacts on the people of Rhode Island, these cuts will just be another poverty tax on working-class Rhode Islanders, Rhode Islanders without cars, rural Rhode Islanders, youth, black and brown families in the urban core who rely on Ripta. And we saw when Ripta piloted the free R-line, ridership increased. We saw that it increased for black and brown families, for lower-income families, for non-English speakers. Because ultimately, public transportation is not meant to be profit-driven or revenue-dependent. It is a public investment, it is a basic necessity, as the previous speaker said. It is not a capitalist venture. So why are we talking about money and not putting the money in to bring the money into our state and make sure that our folks can continue to live their lives? What I'm asking for the governor and the politicians is actually care about people for once instead of your pockets, but we know they won't do that. So I'm asking for you all at Ripta, because I know you don't want to do these cuts based off of how you presented here, is that you refuse these cuts and we will refuse with you. Refuse these cuts, we will refuse with you, and we will continue to stand together to invest in public transportation for Rhode Islanders.
Next would be Samantha Richardson.
Hi, my name is Will, I'm from Oryx. I ride the Ford, the 17, the 18, the 19, 31, and the R-line on a regular basis. I'm also often commuting by bicycle, often taking advantage of Ripta's rack-and-drive. I also use commuter resource RI and Dry Left's RI App, in short, Ripta's foundation of my transportation around the state. I want to start by acknowledging the awful predicament that Ripta has been put into by the failures of our legislators. I have no advice on how to handle the cuts and no feedback to give on which routes should be impacted in which ways. I do have one request, however. If these cuts do go into effect, which I hope they don't, I'm asking that Ripta mark any cuts or schedule changes as temporary pending full budget funded. If you need to update schedules or cancel routes on your webpage, don't delete them, cross them out with a red X and add a footnote, temporarily cut until full budget funded. If you need new schedules, do the same. This will communicate clearly that these cuts should not be permanent and should not be recognized as the new normal. My second piece of testimony is to our state leaders. I've never seen a more deliberate and hostile attack on working-class Rhode Islanders. In a state with a budget of over $14 billion, I'm supposed to believe that we can't find the funding to run by bus to work? That is a lie easy to see through when you realize we just spent $10 million on two giant concrete Rhode Island signs on the side of I-95. Something that most tourists will see for less than 30 seconds and can't even walk up to take a photo in front of. Mr. Potato Head was a better investment in that regard, but we'll leave that too, as Hasbro has packed its bags sending our lap of public transportation as a reason. Governor McKee, Speaker Chikar, Chief, and Senate President Lawson, I see your priorities: tax cuts for big corporations like Citigroup Bank and CBS, all while you run over the bus with the working class, the disabled, the elderly, and the climate-conscious people of Rhode Island. This is unacceptable. Finally, to the board. I know you feel the pressure to move forward with these cuts. You may even feel that pressure from the board chair himself. But mark my words, this will be a stain on your resume. Board member who oversaw the largest cuts ever. But there is a way out. I urge you, instead of voting to approve these cuts, you vote to postpone any decision by one week. I'm positive Chris will find a way to fund things for one extra week, he's that good. Take that chance to use your voice to kick this back to the governor and the legislator. Pen an open letter to Smith Hill. You now have an efficiency study that shows that Ripta is both efficient and essential. You have hours of public testimony from this past week. Use that to request a budgetary funds that are shifted to Ripta to close the gap. If McKee and the General Assembly still want to defund Ripta, then fine, let that be their choice. But don't be so eager to pen your name to the largest cuts in Ripta's history when you have the support of the legislature's own mandated study and the support of everyday working-class Rhode Islanders. Thank you.
Next would be Andrew Mussoff.
Hi, my name is Samantha Richardson. I live in Providence, but I'm actually from Westerly. I still visit Westerly often, I take the 95 to get down there. And I just wanna say that these cuts are going to particularly damage options for people living in southern Rhode Island, where already left out like horrifically and the flex service is kind of, I heard somebody use the term embarrassing earlier. The flex service in Westerly and some of the other routes is embarrassing. As it is right now, the last 95 that leaves to get to Westerly leaves at 5:15 PM, even though a typical workday ends at 5:00 PM. So anybody trying to get to Westerly is stranded. So I'm just gonna keep it short and say that it's really gonna be, like I said, damaging for people in southern Rhode Island and we are going to be hurt by these, you know, service cuts as well. So, thank you.
Virgil Reyes will be next.
Instead of putting the cuts in place as soon as possible and making the service live go for the whole year, how... go for the whole year, how about running the service just like it's running now until sometime next year when the money runs out and just announcing that, yeah, we're gonna run all the service just the way it's been running, and we have enough money to do it until April. And then there will be no service from April until August. Because that gives the leadership all those months to figure out how to come up with that easily little 10 or 15 million dollars by next April. It's like, it's like, you know, we're gonna be with the steering wheel in a game of chicken. It might work better, it's just an idea. The other thing I wanted to say is that a lot of talk about how neater people are even more dependent on transit, it's some kind of foolish, because transit fights poverty. It does this in a lot of ways. Any family that says, you know, the bus service is good enough that, you know, one of us, you know, we need a car, there's always something, but this family doesn't need two cars anymore. And that family just got like a $10,000 raise, which is money that doesn't go to a finance company, that doesn't go to an insurance company out of state. That family is now gonna have money that they're probably gonna spend on local businesses and on, you know, better things for their children. The, I heard it was announced by the government the other day, just one of those anodyne little things like, look how beautiful our state is, we have wonderful beaches, and Newport is a great tourist attraction, everybody should come and visit Rhode Island. And it was curious, because everything that he mentioned in this little blurb of touristic promotion was transit accessible. And nobody, I feel like I'm the first person who's like been walking around trying to say, you know, if you wanted to visit beautiful scenic historic New England and you thought like, is that possible without a car? And everybody tells you, no, it's not possible without a car, you have, you wanna go on vacation, you have to have a car. Because, oh, actually Rhode Island is a place that a lot of people around the world have not been informed, you could come here and there's actually a pretty nice bus system that goes to a lot of nice places. And people who live in cities and countries where transit is not some sort of marker of low status and ill fortune would be really delighted to know this. And I have actually had conversations with people like the charter boat and whale watch operators in Galilee. I said, did you, did you ever think of promoting this to, you know, people who wanna be a car-free tourist that's accessible? And they said, wow, that's a great idea, because they're looking for any angle they can. And there's been, you know, along the number 60 connecting Providence and Newport, there's just dozens of great places to go. And this is, you know, jobs for people locally, you know, any money that people don't spend on cars, any car that's not on the road. It seems so kind of foolish that the state will spend more money to make it possible for me to drive somewhere than it would to make it possible for me to take the bus somewhere. That's really inefficient. And I just wanna thank the management here, because I do feel that a lot of people say, well, buses are terrible. I have this argument with people who like never ride the bus, they say, well, it's terrible. And I said, no, you know, actually, it's, you'd be surprised how, you know, the drivers are professional, they pretty much, you get your transit app, it says it's coming, it comes, you know, it's, nothing bad happens to you on the bus. And, you know, you've been doing a great job. And this is just, it's, these cuts are gonna take it from like, almost pretty good to like what people, a lot of people don't know have been saying, which is that, oh yeah, the buses, like, the service is terrible. It's so foolish. Thanks, thank you.
Sir, what's your name? Sir?
I'm Andrew. Andrew.
Hi, my name's Virgil Reyes, I'm 16 years old, and I'm here for the organization Young Voices. Me and many other high schoolers are worried about how this will affect the upcoming school year. This will make both getting and leaving school a lot more difficult, causing many students to arrive late or not show up to school at all, which can affect the education of many students that use Ripta they had school. This September, we're gonna see more buses getting filled quickly and more teenagers being left at Kennedy Plaza for longer amount of time, making the problem of fights between teenagers even more common. Personally, I take the bus because I'm the oldest of three siblings, they can be taken, being taken care of by a single dad. My dad is too busy to take and pick up all three of us from school, so I have to rely on Ripta for my education. Ripta deserves more funding because of how many people rely on it for, for day-to-day life, regardless of age. Thank you.
I apologize for my slow pace. My ring, my ring is not a happy ring at the moment.
After Grant, the Caitlin Desmond?
I thought we could go ahead.
Please, your turn. You're up there.
You're there, you're there. You want to hear this time again? I can't project, but I know they want this. Okay. Grantel Guy, resident of Providence, actually, neighbor of Providence, well, and longtime transit advocate, I hate to say this, since 1975. Isn't that a bit, half a century? Okay. Everyone is talking about the fact that, you know, here we are in a year of climate change, global warming, the transportation sector contributes the greatest amount, and Rhode Island covered emissions over 40%, and we're gonna cut Ripta? It makes no sense at all whatsoever. So where does the money come from? Well, I have three thoughts, a little thought, about two little ones from bigger, and I have more thoughts when I'm in parenting, but I have so many minutes, so I just give them to you. Number one, the traffic circulation pattern around Kennedy Plaza, it doesn't make any sense. You wanna go west to east, you go down Washington Street, you're gonna go down Fulton Street. Either way. If you wanna go east to west, you can't do either one, you gotta dose it all around. Does that make any sense? No. What they should do is simply move the four bus stops on the north side of Fulton Street to the north side of Washington Street. Make Washington Street two ways buses only, and that frees up Fulton Street to be two ways for everybody. Washington Street, that one block of Washington Street already has a raised, slender, concrete median. Whoever heard of the concrete median dividing the same direction of traffic? But that's what the case is right now. This would be helpful for everybody, passengers for operations and for city problems. So that's number one. Number two, the, it was talk last month about Rhode Island Hospital occupying so much territory that used to be house lots, and they, over time, acquired the house lots, some of the houses were falling down, but some of the houses were okay, and paving over and making them into public service parking lots. And Rhode Island Hospital currently doesn't charge for parking. Parking is free. Well, that doesn't make any sense, because there is no such thing as free parking. Parking costs money, you gotta park, and you gotta pay for it, you gotta stripe it, you have to, you have to sleep in the summertime, fall in the wintertime, lighter at night, patrol gear, you know, you turn the cars, this should be a little bit costly. And I'm just saying a little bit costly. Now, if you park on the street, Providence, it's a meter, what is it, quarter for 12 minutes, so that's a buck and a quarter an hour. So if you're there for eight hours, that's 10 bucks. What I'm suggesting is that Rhode Island Hospital charge, five bucks for the entire day of parking, and so, over time, that's fine, it's still fine, stay five bucks, and then rebate it to all their employees as monthly bus passes and Ripta. If you multiply the five bucks a day times five, that's $25 a week, times four, that's $100 a month, bus pass is only $7 a month. Everybody wins! And we start encouraging folks to do what we all should be doing if we're able to and able of, and that's taking a bus instead of driving every day. Now, sure, if you've got errands to do after work, you know, then it's more efficient time-wise to take your car. But you're not doing errands every day after work, so the days you're not, take a bus. That's number two. Number three, I have suggested this for numerous years now, someone mentioned earlier that a very low percentage of Rhode Islanders take transit, and you have to get after other urban areas and where it's low, it should be higher. But most people don't think about taking a bus, and if they think about it, that's as far as it goes, because they have no sense of what the schedule is. And so my suggestion has been, and continues to be, to direct mail. Direct mail works, otherwise we wouldn't be getting direct mail on a regular basis. Direct mail the appropriate bus schedule to every household that's within, what is it, a quarter mile in an urban area, a half mile in a rural area. How many people have refrigerators that don't have magnets with stuff on the refrigerator? So, direct mail the bus schedule, magnet to the refrigerator, and they'll have it there. That would be step number one, and I would suggest that at least two times. First time, you just say, hey, fine, I have to pay a fee to it. I hear you. Those are my three suggestions within the timeframe, and we should do that right now, right away. And I agree with the gentleman who said, don't cut. Ripta's board should not cut on Thursday, they should say, it's staying the way it is. Instead, implement these three little measures that have the opportunity to enhance ridership, because that's what we need to do. We're not back to where we were before COVID. And there's no justification for that, it's time to get back there. Now, there are these, well, no, this kind of thing, but here are some opportunities to do it, and we ought to take advantage of it, and so I encourage everybody to make those phone calls, especially to the legislators, so they call the elected higher-ups, and that makes, that makes a big difference. Two reasons, one, state legislators will be aware that people are paying attention, and two, state legislators will be aware that people care. Thank you, thank you.
Next will be Taylor. After Taylor will be Merrill Smith.
Hi, my name is Taylor. I take the 63 to therapy and shopping. I used to take the 63 as well to Walmart when I was working, but unfortunately, my license has been suspended due to mental illness, and right now, I've just been done with a lot. I need the bus to go back to college this fall, and get to my province in Newport County and mental health. In the Transit Master Plan, the government talks a big game about funding transit and the environment and how important it all is, but for every dollar in transit, we get a huge benefit. The gas tax is obviously not the most effective form of revenue-increasing funding source, because less cars are gassed now and more people are driving. But Ripta is comparative to similar networks, no savings have really been found. There are a lot of people who will be affected by this change. Tourists to Newport, Rhode Island, where I live, will no longer count on that same frequency of the buses that are taking them there, such as the 14, which takes them there on weekends, the 64, where some people come off the Amtrak train, the Newport will not run on Saturday. Sunday, the 63 will not run, that's the transit bus that connects to the supermarkets. People who work all day cannot get to there, it's a big problem. Thank you.
Ellis. I am Merrill.
Hello, my name is Merrill Schmidt, and I work at Providence Student Union, which is a youth-led organization that is rallying student power for student rights and students' well-being in Providence. PSU is a proud member of the Ripta, the Save Ripta Coalition, and we have been so for the past, I think, two to three years. This is very important for our entire team, especially our student members, who are currently on summer break, and many of them are not able to speak here because of that, because high school students mostly rely on Ripta to go to school and get home. This is going to affect their attendance and greatly reduce academic achievement in Providence and across the state. Students need Ripta to get to school, and beyond that, to get to jobs, to get to appointments, to see their friends, to go out, to go to the beach, anywhere you need to go, because you can't drive when you're too young. And a lot of times, parents can't take the time to take students everywhere they need to go. There are also economic disparities that affect the number of students who can get around by personal car. So this will affect our student population, it'll also affect our organization, because students won't be able to rely on buses to come to PSU and spend their after-school time doing something productive and getting resources in a safe community spot. This is also affecting me personally, because I share a car with my partner, we live in Cranston, and we need the bus to get around, because we do not have two cars currently. We take the bike, but sometimes we need to actually use the bus to get further and go places that aren't accessible on the bike. So I think this is gonna affect a lot of families like ours that are trying to save money and reduce their environmental impact by actually reducing the number of cars they have. So, in conclusion, please consider stopping these cuts, because they aren't good for our future or the students who rely on this service right now.
Ellis. After is Lane Demas.
Hello, everyone. I am a lifelong transit rider. I started riding buses here in Providence when I was a small child with my mother. Yeah, I wrote all these notes, who knows if I'm gonna use them. The important thing is that I am a rider by choice. I have two cars, I ride the bus to my mechanic a lot, so that should say some things, but, you know, I do ride by choice. And that is important. The choice riders are an important part of this, because it means that without the bus service, those people are gonna go back to being in their cars, and more people in their cars means that traffic is gonna get worse. So the people who don't ride the bus now are also going to suffer if we lose bus service. Now, I'm appreciative of the fact that, and I hope that gets through to the people out there, I don't know with cameras, I hope they get through to the people out there, especially our legislators, who probably do not ride the bus very much. I understand, you've got a car, you're gonna suffer along with the rest of us if we lose bus service. So please keep that in mind, and keep in mind the fact that Ripta has passed its efficiency, you know, efficiency study. We're not dealing with a corrupt organization, we're not dealing with an organization that's hemorrhaging money for no reason. This is just how much it costs to have a half decent bus network. We need to find the money to have our half decent bus network and work on making it into a three-quarter decent bus network in the course of this new future maybe. In, in the face of a world where, and in a country where countless transit agencies are facing this fiscal cliff, we have an opportunity to do what Rhode Island has always done, which is get out ahead of everyone, to be independent. We put that thing back on the top of the State House. We can be independent, we can show how it's done, we can fund Ripta.
Can you say your name with a record, please?
Ellis. Ellis Tamelio, T-A-M-M.
Thank you.
Lane?
I'm lame, I switched places, because I have to leave like really quickly, so lame will be in my thoughtful switch. So, hi, everyone, my name is Les Viadon, and I'm a graduate student at the University of Rhode Island, and I am here on behalf of my friends, my fellow students who could not make it, specifically those who are international students and don't have access to cars. Many graduate students can't find or afford year-round housing, although that is another topic for another town hall, but they can't walk to campus, so they rely on the Ripta bus service. One of my friends' examples is from Ghana, and she has a driver's license from Ghana, but unfortunately, it takes over a year to get a United States driver's license. So she has no access, even if she wanted to. She would not drive, and she can't walk, because she doesn't have a house near campus, because there are no houses near campus. So, without the bus, she wouldn't be able to get to campus, and without that, she wouldn't have her student visa, which means she would have to be deported, which means the bus saves people from being deported. This is very like, this is very important. And this is just one example. So, without the bus, she wouldn't be able to get to campus. And without that, she wouldn't have her student visa, which means she would have to be deported. Which means the bus saves people from being deported. This is very like, this is very important. And this is just one example, and there are many, many other examples of international students who don't have access to cars or way to campus without the buses. And you know Rhode Island is not Rhode Island without a higher education, without a community colleges or universities that rely on international students. So again, Rhode Island is not Rhode Island without higher education. It's international students, and thus the bus, which gets students here. So please, please leave. I know it's insane, but please like fund Ripta and help those international students be here. Because they work so hard, and they deserve to be here, just like everyone else. Thank you.
So, Aina Moro? Next will be, and I am.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak here. Yeah, I currently work at New Castle, Rhode Island. And I have a family of five. And nobody knows how to drive. And all the hospitals are located in this area. Thank you very much for still keeping to the three flex. But at the same time, the reliability of flex as it is right now, having to go to get to the hospital and so forth. And the topic I would like to focus on today is the Bus 69. Bus 69 collects ULI currently to Galilee. Basically, this area can be divided into two parts. A densely populated area of the north and relatively less populated area in the south. Of course, if we include the, think about the ridership divided by the cost, probably can be strongly affected by the southern part that has very small ridership, but a very long route to Galilee. But the diversity news came, obviously, and leadership is considering the cutting all off. And on the rigorously, this part was looked. Is there any ways to keep the half at least, instead of taking up all at once? And for example, keeping the highly dense area that would shorten the route to the half, but probably secure most of the ridership? And also, if you look at the schedule, it goes to 12:30 a.m., probably a few people rise there. So I wonder if there's any way to, instead of going directly, to cutting all of 69 off, but save some, but condensing it to the part that has relatively higher ridership? And eventually, that might increase the ridership divided by cost and may not fall into the category of cutting off. So I would really appreciate the consideration of some of that. I totally understand the situation, the budget is really tight. I really appreciate the service. And I love Ripta, I have lots of Ripta. Schedule is like back. But today, I would like to, yeah, ask for your help to keep at least some part of 69, especially from ULI to South Florida. If that is difficult, at least ULI to Redfield Mall is a nice return area. So I really appreciate it. Lots of students also, please. Thank you very much for watching.
Next will be Vanessa Flores Valenah.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ania Sangster, and I live in Providence. I'm a call director at the Providence Student Union. I'm also a high school student at Trinity Academy for the Performing Arts, just around the corner. I've been using public transportation for as long as I can remember. For many of us, public transportation isn't just convenience, it is a means for survival. When bus routes get cut or shut down, it directly affects our ability to get to school, after-school activities, and our jobs. Not everyone has parents or family who can drive them, drive them around. For some, the bus is the only way to get to school. My friend, my best friend's only line to get to school has been cut, and her grandmother is disabled and unable to drive. Not everyone has the luxury of a car or being able to drive. Cutting these services can lead to students being late to school or even absent, which will affect our grades and overall academic performance. When transportation becomes unreliable or non-existent, we miss out on many opportunities. Many youth like myself also rely on part-time jobs to save up for college or support our families. If we can't get to work or school, we lose so much. I want to speak directly to Governor McKee. Investing in public transportation is investing in the youth's future. Not just the youth brought out its future. It ensures we have, it ensures we have equal opportunities to succeed regardless of our socioeconomic background. We need to make sure our voices are heard and advocate for reliable, accessible, and accessible public transportation for all Rhode Island citizens. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Vanessa. I am the executive director of Providence Youth Student Movement. I grew up on buses, actually. Not Ripta, but L.A. Metro buses down, which, Ripta, we can learn a lot from L.A. public transportation. I'm willing to sit down. I got the rules memorized. I grew up on those buses. It's why I didn't learn how to drive, actually, until I was in my twenties. And then I learned here how to drive, and I regret it ever since. And I did take Ripta. I actually almost got a marriage proposal on Ripta. I said no, but why deny people that experience? Ripta is always an adventure. And when the R-line was free, y'all eat. Y'all did your thing, because the R-line got me places, and I need to go places. But more importantly, my youth got places to go to, right? As a youth organization, we're constantly supporting young people and getting to where they need to go. Whether it's school, whether it's home, whether it's to an action or just to have fun somewhere, right? We're buying them bus tickets. Well, we offered to buy them bus tickets. But half the time, I'm like, "Actually, can you give me a ride share?" Because it's a lot quicker and it's a lot more reliable. And half the time, I have to tell them, "No, unfortunately, we can't afford that. You have to take Ripta." And so with these Ripta cuts, it's becoming a self-fulfilling prophecy. Ridership is down, so it's not gonna get cut, because less people are riding the bus, because the bus never shows up. But there's enough money. There is enough resources. There is enough to go around, it's just not properly being allocated. And so if we're serious about Rhode Island and our future, if we're serious about our communities, about supporting those who have to take the bus and those who choose to take the bus, it's important that we invest in public transportation. Because investing in public transportation is investing in public safety. We are all much better off when the R-line shows up on time. But also, when I can take the bus to Newport and not have to take that toll, that toll tax, we all thrive. And so, I know, I know y'all don't want to be here. I know this is not something that y'all are trying to do, right? This is the governor. And so to Governor McKee, I get it. You don't like young people. You don't like people of color. You don't like people who don't own their homes. I don't know what we did to you. Fund Ripta. Thank you.
And after Jennifer will be Amber Blaylock.
So I'm a resident of Warwick. I take the number four bus every single day, even to go to work. I also take the three, I take the fifty-six, I take the fifty-seven. And I have a job where I have to go to meetings all around the city of Providence. I have a lot of other Providence routes as well. I'm a lifelong Ripta rider, I've taken it since I was a kid. It's a lifeline. It's absolutely essential. I moved to Warwick because my house is near a bus line. Real estate agent said, "If you want to live here, you can take the bus." That was a selling point for our house. I take the bus because I work in a nonprofit job, so economically, it's really hard. I also have a chronic medical condition, which during different periods of my life, I've not been able to drive for medical reasons. Ripta is absolutely essential for me to live my life. I take it to work, I take it to socialize, I take it to go to events in Providence. And cutting weekend service for the poor is just gonna be crushing. Like, I take it to the cemetery where my husband has buried. I take it all around. And it's, I have taken the bus to get my wave card, actually. That's the only way I can get it, no one else is willing to do it. So it's just absolutely crushing to think that, like, services are being cut. And it's an economic crisis. It's also a health crisis. Rhode Island is in a health crisis already. People do not have access to their doctors and to healthcare. And taking Ripta weeks and cutting them down just makes it harder for people to go to the doctor, access care, get to their AA meetings, and get other crucial mental health services that are so needed in the state. So I want the governor to reconsider, or I want our politicians to reconsider. I really like the idea of Ripta trying to pause making a decision this week, so that we can try and get more political attention and get the money we so desperately need to keep public transit going in Rhode Island at the level, at the level it's at already. Thank you.
Advocate Amber, Roberta, Blaylock?
No, I'm gonna draw my own last name. Hi, my name is Amber Blaylock. I was here actually at the new meeting as well, where I told some of my story. I'm not going to repeat that, because I would like to have effectively six minutes of time. And also, I brought my mother to tell me about that. What I am going to say is, however bad we think these cuts are going to be, and they're gonna be bad, they're gonna be worse. Because one thing, when we talk about the transit death spiral, is I don't think people realize enough just how many little things add up when riding transit. I live about equidistant between an R stop and a one stop. They are east and west from me, so I have to choose one direction to go in. Other than that, they actually go a lot of places that I need to go, both of them do. I'm very frequently able to get to the same places by the R or the one. The one runs maybe half to a third as often as the R. I take the one maybe 10% of the time, as much as I take the R, because of that convenience factor. It is more than, it is not linear, it is exponential. It is the extra convenience. It is the habit of riding the bus. And that is a thing that you lose when you have service cuts. You lose people just making optional trips, because it's convenient. You lose people forming the habit of getting to go places and forming new habits of driving, or walking, or taking a bike. You have problems with transfers, like people mentioned at the previous meeting, where if you're going someplace and the bus frequency is lowered, and you have to do a transfer, then all of a sudden, it takes way longer to do the transfer. The whole trip takes longer, maybe you don't bother. It is something that will exacerbate, as mentioned by the previous speaker, our primary care crisis. I just moved here earlier this year. I don't have a primary care provider yet. I found one that'll see me in March of next year. They are not in Providence. They're a pretty good distance away. I am hoping to be able to take the bus there. If I can't, I'm gonna have to beg my parents for a ride, because I don't drive for neurological reasons. Fortunately, I have that option, a lot of people don't. And if they can't get to their primary care providers, they're going to be looking for ones closer to home. And that's only going to exacerbate the load. It's going to exacerbate student absentee issues, as many previous speakers have mentioned. There are students on high school and college relying on Ripta to get to their education. There are people who rely on Ripta to get to their job. The fact is that we think that the money that we have now, these are the cuts we need to be able to afford the bus service. But we're gonna lose revenue. We're gonna have more cuts, and then the moral of ridership loss, and more cuts and more ridership loss, until the only people left who take the bus are people who have literally no other choice. Which is a situation I respect. But if we want to insist on treating public transit as a business, maybe literally the last possible option is not gold. And if we're going to make a more sensible choice of not running public transit as a business, because public transit is an investment in the community, the same way that roads are, which we don't expect to make profit, then we should be looking at the fact that, hey, Ripta is very efficiently run. We just need more money to continue to run the service at the levels it's at. So we need to make up that gap. And finally, I think it is absolutely obscene that we have to come here and beg people who do not have the ability to do really much about this, because Governor McKee is not here to face us and to explain why he is not funding Ripta. Thank you.
After Roberta, we'll have Ian Nesbitt.
Hi, I'm Roberta Blaylock, and I'm that young lady's mother. So my husband and I just moved here from a fairly rural area in Pennsylvania. And I can tell you what life is like without any kind of public transportation, and it is not nearly as nice. One of the big things that we were looking for when we decided to downsize and move was a place where we could actually take public transportation to different places. Because one of the things that happens when you don't have public transportation is you have to drive through traffic to get to places. You have to park and pay for parking. You have to let your car warm up and cool down as you do that. Everything that goes with that. Whereas, right now, we can walk out half a block from our house and take the bus. If we want to see a museum downtown, we want to go to the Water Fire Festival, we want to go to the beach, we want to do, you know, any of those things that put money into the economy and also give us things that we enjoy, we can now take the bus. And that has been wonderful. Speaking from the financial perspective, I should point out that that was a big criteria when we were looking at houses. We wanted to make sure that it was a walkable area, that we could take the bus, that there was a bus stop nearby. And we ruled out a lot of areas, because they did not meet that criteria. We picked Rhode Island and we picked Providence, because we could get places, we could do things, we could have fun without the stress that goes with driving everywhere. That is a target audience that you want to get using public transportation. You want to make sure that people really understand how beneficial it is. You want to get them out and doing things, some of that voluntary stuff. Even if they take their car to work, if they get used to taking the bus for other things, they take it more and more, and it builds on. And it also then provides revenue. And to follow up on that one young man who mentioned earlier about putting temporary cuts on the website, put the governor's phone number there, too.
After Ian will have Ben Surrock.
Good evening. My name is Ian Nesbitt, Lieutenant Commander, United States Navy, retired. I had a career in public transport over 24 years. Eight deployments by primary transport cruisers and destroyers, including USS Hopper, USS Harley Burke, and others. Came home from the war eight years ago. And I'm a half, particularly on behalf of my son, who asked me to come here. It's a lot of our fellow citizens that are unable to travel by car for medical or psychological reasons. It's a major decision. I'm pissed. I'm pissed at you guys, but I'm pissed, I'm booked. Two words came to my mind as I was thinking what to say. First is impressed, and second is disappointed. I'm really impressed with this turnout. For my whole career, I was busy on the forward edge and never came to a town call, right? So here I am, and I see over 100 of my fellow citizens and global fellows coming together, trying to express themselves with dignity and respect. That's an achievement, and I think we can all look around and just smile. We look around in America, and there's a lot of yelling and name-calling. And here, right now, we're coming together with dignity. This is awesome. But disappointed, I am. Unbelievably disappointed. There's 59 lives were affected, only eight unchanged. It's a major decision with less than one month to figure all this out? This is clown shit. I'm so disappointed in Rhode Island. And I didn't even know, I have a car, and normally, my son is the bus driver, okay? So my son said, "Dad, get over here." I said, "Okay, I'm on my way." I get in the car, we drive over here. I'm doing the math, and I'm thinking, Governor McKee and the state legislature, this should have been figured out six months in advance. There should have been public hearings six months in advance. And if we, the fellow citizens and our global fellows, didn't show up six months ago, that's on us. But if you just pull some kind of nighttime magic, and like, surprise, we're just gutting a basic means of connecting our state together, that's not acceptable, as far as I can tell. So where do we, where do we go from here, I think? We, I certainly appreciate the leadership. We, I certainly appreciate the leadership being here for this, but like the previous two women ago said, is that we need to contact our elected representatives, okay? For those who haven't forgotten, or have forgotten, America is still a republican democracy. We have our elected service. We're acting on our behalf. So we need to take the three hours that we just spent to do this, ask an appointment for our state representative, and go in groups of two, or four, or eight, right? And then ask that state representative, "Are you willing to schedule a meeting with leadership with the aid of us? Because we'd like to go with you." Because I have a suspicion that however well-intentioned our words are to this video camera over there, I doubt it's going to mean much. I could be wrong, but I doubt it's going to mean much. But that's not how democracy is. It's not supposed to be just talking to a camera. And it's not just supposed to talking to the governor. It's supposed to be, I think, that's my understanding, is at the basic legislative level. So if we can spend the time talking to our legislatures, and whoever made this nice sheet, I really appreciate you, because it puts some key phone numbers and like website, like figure it out. So we just invested three hours here. We should be able to invest another half an hour tomorrow to make some phone calls, to ask for some appointments. And if they say there's no appointments, then like, "Can you please tell me the name of you who says there's no appointments?" We can write a letter to our local papers, right? And this is a chance for all of us to be strengthening our democracy muscles. We've gotten a little bit weak, so I just, I really appreciate all you listening to me. And it kind of feels worthwhile, like, what did I do for 24 years? You know? What did I do was this, and who did I do it for? It was for my son, but also for all of you. And so I thank you, and thank all the bus leadership and the operations officer I saw earlier today, who's supposed to like make a plan with 28 days. That's ridiculous. I think we should all just be disciplined as Americans, Rhode Islanders, and for our global fellows, you're welcome to, but like, come on. So we got to make some calls tomorrow, not just today. That "thank" is the answer. I'm going to try to do that myself as well. So thank you, and goodbye.
We have Ben. Sam Roden. Sam Roden. Meredith Hosfield.
Hello, my name is Meredith Hosfield. I grew up in Cranston. I now live in Providence. I spent 10 years in Massachusetts. And I came back here during the pandemic five years ago. When I was growing up, I took the 22 and the 31 to get to the Met in Providence, and also the 92 among, I forget what the line was that went by our Rodrigo Lins Hospital to get to my internship. And, well, for now, I mostly take the R line, which is one of the lines that's scheduled to be cut. And frankly, the R line is what makes Rhode Island livable for me. Because I work up in Boston. I, you know, I take my paycheck home to Rhode Island to spend it in this economy rather than trying to live in Massachusetts. And frankly, I love Providence. I love how communal it is. I love how I know a number, I know a number of people who came here today. And I, you know, not having as much service to be able to, to be able to say, even go to the places that I would like to go on the weekends, like Crystal, or Fort Smith, or Newport, and contribute to their economies, that is what is going to, you know, that is also going to make this state less livable for me. It's always been a point of pride that I could say, "You know, in Rhode Island, you can get anywhere on the bus." And I don't own a car, which is somewhat of a choice for me. It used to not because I didn't have a license. But now it is, because I can get to my job in Boston without, I can get to the train to get, I can get to, I take the R line to get the train to get to my job without increasing the amount of traffic that's going into Boston and out of Boston every day, and without having to ride while I'm tired, thus making, you know, thus making my commute far less safe. And not to mention the environmental impacts. And I would like to live in this city, thanks. And I know, I really appreciate all the work that you folks do and that every driver I see does. And I really think that Governor McKee should invest in Ripta and invest in our community and not make this state less livable for workers.
Amadi Stewart. After Amadi, we have Saraj Sinha.
My name's Amadi Stewart, and I live on the east side of Providence. I'm here today to share my story and urge state leaders to properly and permanently fund Ripta, someone whose daily life depends on it. These proposed cuts are a direct threat to my ability to live, work, and stay connected in this state. I relied on these bus lines as a college student, and I now get to work daily. The 60 line is how I get to my work in Warren. It's already a popular line, stressed by delays caused by traffic and the ongoing crisis of the Washington Bridge. The proposed frequency cuts will further burden it, and this is one of the better ferry lines. The buses are already packed by 4:00 p.m. Squeezing more people on this bus might mean riders standing on a bus that rides on the highway. Lastly, the 92 is being bisected in a devastating way. And Sunday service will now run just once every 55 minutes. The east side section is being removed entirely and awkwardly stitched into a new infrequent Route 91 without a weekend service. This is more than a service cut. It's a heartbreaking severance of the city. Reduced frequency doesn't just mean longer waits. It means buses that are more crowded, more delayed, more stressful to ride, especially during rush hour, which is when I and many others travel most often. It means more people left behind at bus stops, more missed connections, and more time wasted for thousands of us, hopefully, who don't have the luxury of a car or money for rideshares. And while I'm deeply affected here in Providence, I can't stop thinking about people in Westerly and Richmond who are facing full weekday eliminations, no transit at all. How is that acceptable? These buses aren't a backup plan. They are the plan for so many of us. Cutting them means cutting people off from their jobs, their education, their community, and their futures. Please reconsider these cuts. Rhode Islanders deserve a transit system that works for all of us. Thank you.
Saraj? Charles Spelman? Have you, Saraj?
No, I just, I have to make a bus. I have to make a bus. Otherwise, I'm going to have to wait an hour.
Just please say the name.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Otherwise, I'm going to have to wait an hour if I don't make this bus.
We all get it. My name is Allison Rich, and I live in Exeter. I'm Tracy. So I've been riding this bus for as soon as, as long as I've been in the state, which is 1998. I grew up in New York City, and then I moved to Boston and Cambridge. I've been a public transportation rider my whole life. And I, I have been, I moved down, I used to live in Chapachet, where every four years, we have our bus threatened to be cut completely. And we have to call our state rep and our state senators and get you guys out there, call the media. And it got really old, so I moved down to South County, where I could always count on a 65 or a 66 because I know that's never going to be cut. Well, guess what? 65 is slated for demolition. So it's frustrating, but I just basically have three points. Is that funding, funding public transportation with a gas tax primarily is not the way to fund public transportation. Have a way to do it. And all throughout the country, every public transport authority, public transportation authority runs in a deficit, or it doesn't even break even. And I don't know, I don't hear about people threatening to cut these lines as drastically as they're threatening to cut. And then my other question is, I know Governor McKee doesn't ride the bus, and I'm pretty sure most members of the state senate don't. But I am curious to know how many people on the board actually are bus riders of Ripta? It's a big question of mine I've always had. Because you guys are, you know, you're in power. And, you know, basically, if you don't understand what we're going through, then how do you understand the whole situation, is the rule. Thank you for coming. I do appreciate it. And I really, really hope that we can avoid these cuts and that McKee sees this, and I will be following lots of people after this hearing. So thank you very much, and I'm sorry for letting in, but I just, I've been up since 5:00, and it worked since 8:00, and I'm exhausted, and I got to get home. So thank you so much for not letting me wait in Rhode Island.
It's Celeste. We'll be next.
Hi, I'm Charles Spelman. I'm associated with a couple of organizations, The Oasis and Lommy, which both support people in recovery from mental health issues. And a couple of people have mentioned that already. What happened to me personally, I usually should tell this story, but in 1978, I was driving my parents' car, and I couldn't see out of the back window because of the vision I was seeing, otherwise known as a hallucination. And ever since then, I've been taking the bus. Even though I don't have that anymore, I never went back to driving after that. I now work with people with mental illness. And there's a big problem in our society with people having meditating, snap, and housing. All these things people require. People whose lives have been interrupted by disabilities through no fault of their own. My working life was interrupted by disability. My school life was interrupted by disability. I've come back, and I'm a peer specialist now. And some people I know become social workers after going through periods of unemployment. And people need to take the bus who have no, are very low income. And I think next year, we got to revive the call to tax the rich because that's what they did in Massachusetts, and we got to do that here. Because they're talking about closing the largest mental health center in the state, Gateway. They're talking about closing the dental clinic at Rhode Island Hospital that serves kids with disabilities who need four people sometimes to work on them at a time because they have disabilities and they don't feel comfortable at the dentist. So these are just some other issues coming up. And one right now, of course, is Ripta. And people do, oh, the ride van. Some people I know are disabled physically, so they have to take the ride van. And I hope that, I haven't heard anything about that. I hope it's not being cut. Although I know that the policy has to be within a certain distance of a bus route. And I know people who want to take the ride van out to northern Rhode Island and various places, and I hope that's not cut. Thank you.
Dr. Celeste, we have Dawn Burke.
Good evening, everyone. I'm not Celeste. They went earlier. I'm Lane Damaski. I am representing over 700 graduate assistants from the University of Rhode Island. The 69 bus and the 64 bus are particularly important to us, though every single bus line is used and important and efficient within Rhode Island. Thank you all to Ripta so much for coming out here tonight and having all of these hearings as well for us. For focusing on the 69 and the 64, these are essential services for some of us. The 69 brings me to the doctor's office, the bank, groceries. It connects us to food banks and other social services, and it also connects us to the community of South Kingston. The 69 is our most southern bus line. I took the 69 on a Saturday to go play music. I pulled up my Riot Share app to see, hey, how long will it take for me to get back? That rideshare, which was 4.6 miles, was going to cost $50. This is not something that we have anything to replace. For the 64, it is the main and only connection between University of Rhode Island's main and Bay campus. Our Bay campus is the spark of our blue economy, and it has our GSO programs as well. And both of these bus lines open housing options for our URI students, our professors, and my union members. So we highly encourage Governor McKee to see the value in the services that are continuing to go on. And thank you all, everyone, for coming out.
Denise Ramirez.
How many more?
Actually, two. Paul.
I'm next.
Yes, you're next.
Okay, how about that?
They're both you.
Yeah, both of us.
Good evening. My name is Paul LeBong. This is my service dog, my stroke award dog, most famous service dog in the country. He's been on national news, AG, short for Agape. He's got me to the hospital three times and saved me from strokes. I have a very special place in my heart for Ripta. I grew up in One Socket. My grandparents were textile, immigrant textile mill workers. So were my parents. My three older brothers, all when they graduated from One Socket High School, went on to work at General Motors in Framingham. Well, I was such a hellion that none's pushed, pushed, pushed. I skipped a couple of grades. I graduated at 16. I couldn't follow my brothers to GM. So I decided to go to Rhode Island Junior College. The first in the family, you know. And back then, trust me, at 16 years old, your parents would give you a car. So the 54, I rode the 54 when it left One Socket, made one stop at Sales Hill, went straight to Kennedy Plaza, and then connected on down to Rhode Island Junior College. In the afternoon, my father was the janitor of the big courthouse in Providence. So I take the bus home, and I'd sit in one of the courtrooms or one of the conference rooms, do my homework, ride home to my dad. After two years, I went to, I moved to New Hampshire, went to college here, started a career that took me to 160 cities around the world. I was a global consultant. 13 years ago, because of health reasons, I had to retire. And I was the highest-paid consultant in the company worldwide. And literally, I said, "Oh, that to Ripta." Now I'm an author. I'm retired, but I've written numerous books. And I wrote a book earlier this year, because when I, oh. So when I lost my career, I knew that Rhode Island, I was living in Dallas and lived there for 30 years. I had been in transit systems all over Europe, all over the world, and I knew Rhode Island, Ripta's great because it can take you to all four states. As an alderman in Nashville and Hampshire, I helped start the transit system there. As a consultant, I helped Cobb County, Georgia, start up their system. And I helped Denton County, Texas, start up their system as a marketing consultant. I know a little bit about transit systems. I came back to Rhode Island, retired, I came back to Rhode Island because I can't drive anymore and I needed a place to live. I wrote a book earlier this year, after frustrating several years trying to give some ideas and suggestions to Governor McKee. The title of the book is Hopeless Rhode Island: Ocean State Underwater. And here's the subtitle, "With Common Sense Solutions to Problems Created as a Result of Cronyism, Corruption, Complacency, and Cover-Ups." Now Governor McKee and Peter Alvede tell me my book is trash. They haven't read it. But I'm not, this is, and he said, oh, it's, Governor McKee says, "I don't want to just read a bunch of bitching." No, it's got a lot of suggestions and ideas. And there's a chapter on Ripta. And in the chapter on Ripta, I talk about how, you know, the $30 million deficit, and they hire, go out and spend $492,000 to our state consultant to show them how to save money. Well, it's an old saying, when you're in a hole, you stop digging. Well, I dig deeper. So it's honestly a consultant coming up with these ideas. But in my, in my book, if you read it, and this is Duran, I emailed you. I don't know if you did read it. I've got an exchange. But I say a few things. Number one, if you go to Bailey's Casino in Lincoln, there are close to 100 buses that go in and out of there every day, hauling people who don't, can't drive, who don't have a car, can barely have money in their pocket. Ripta delivers them free of charge to Bailey's Casino. They don't need it. Here's my second suggestion, my second thing. You know, Ripta built that beautiful garage down in Wickford, right? I call it the Taj Mahgarage. If you go there today, there's probably less than 25 cars in it because hardly anybody uses a train to get to Providence. But guess what, starting next, next month, how many of you here from URI? Okay, so starting next month until next May, that garage is gonna be jam-packed with hundreds of cars every day. And guess who's those cars belong to? URI students from Massachusetts, Connecticut, New York, Pennsylvania, Ohio, walk around, see the license plates, charge a monthly fee, they're parking there for free. They, they take the 66 bus from the campus to go pick up their car and then go back. They don't have to worry about cleaning, snow, it's nice, it's, it's just, there's a guard there 24 hours a day. Charge those people. Now here's the other one, okay? The new transit center in Patucket, the train, they've expanded the parking lot three times now. It's free parking. People are going to Boston, one of the employees is working in Boston, I mean, a lot of those people going to Boston are making six-figure incomes and they're getting free parking, compliments of Ripta, in Patucket. You start at Alaburu and you go all the way to Canton, every parking lot along the way on the, on the MBTA line, people have to park, have to pay to park. So I hope you take that, you know, I, I emailed, did you ever read my, get my email forwarded to you? Just, just the last week or so, yeah, because I was out of the country, I was actually in Cuba on a mission trip. A friend told me on WhatsApp that this was coming up, so I emailed Mr. Duran and said, hey, the governors didn't read my book, maybe you might want to read my chapter on Ripta. The other thing is, you know, as a consultant, I would never thought that I was smarter than my clients or whatever, and I always gave them advice on how to, how to, you know, look at their situations. So I would give you some free advice, two things. Number one, have a town hall meeting with all your drivers, talk to them, listen to them, ask them what should be done, doesn't matter a $400,000 consultant. And secondly, I would urge you, one day, one day, check on your offices, have every one of your staff and employees spend eight hours riding buses all over the state, talking to people. You know the saying, you know, walking mile in my shoes, ride a few miles on my bus room, and then you have a real picture of what's happening, okay? So, well, the other, again, so now back, back to the Taj Mahgarage.
Sir, just so you know, your three minutes time is up.
Oh, you know, my colleague just said about me, never ask for overtime, they'll tell you how to build a watch, I'm a big fan of ghosts. But just one last point, again, that empty garage in, in Wickford right now on hot summer days, the state, how asinine, we don't open the beaches till 9:00 in the morning. People could go to the garage, park there, park, park for the day, charge them $10, park for the day, in shade, give them a shuttle bus back and forth to the beaches. There you go. McGee and Albiini will never hire me as a consultant, but if y'all want, if y'all want to hire someone who knows what, can come up with some good ideas for you, I'm available. Thank you. And by the way, my book is on Amazon.
Thank you both. Clearly put a lot of work into this whole process.
We had a hand over here.
Briefly, because I know people want to go home by now, but I want to ask for, my name is Pat Ford, I'm with local media, media outlet called The Colish Radio. We do radio on West One Socket and we do some digital down here. Who here has heard of the route R1636? Curiously, it's not up on the closure list either. R1636 is the free shuttle bus service afforded to the tenants of the Centerville Soccer Stadium on game day. Now reading this, R1636 will loop continuously between key bus stops in the stadium every eight to 10 minutes on game day. R1636 is the only Ripta bus that will provide direct service to the stadium, dropping passengers off at nearby Ivanaywa Park. The free game day service will begin operating three hours before pickup, continue until one hour after all post-game events conclude. How very nice of them. That's for your soccer stadium. Now, you would say, well, that's pretty cool, Ripta's outsourcing some of their operations. How much is getting Ripta paid? From New Jersey? It's going to say UGAS, 0.0. We are subsidizing a for-profit entertainment organization. Now I've actually done that, rather than we can have it all waiting here within time limits, to find out how much that's actually going to cost. I actually have for a month or two ago the contract and the, if you will, documentation on the, how this came to be. I would deny 148 different pieces in the app, and told it's for complicated reasons that, you know, inference me I couldn't possibly understand. But I'll explain it to you. Anyone who's followed the soccer stadium, Tom Graham in Patucket knows that there's probably a sweetheart deal between them to do anything they can for this housewarming investment. Now, senior management at Ripta will tell us that they're receiving advertising in exchange for that. Well, I don't know if there's a single thing in Rhode Island that needs less advertising, but they're claiming we're going to encourage hopefully other people to take Ripta, if traditionally you have it. So what we're literally doing right now, and I'll find out, I'll put it up on my blog if anyone cares to read it, how much this ended up costing the state, but what we're doing is, we're crucifying service right now to the people of Rhode Island. And at the same time, we're giving it away to a select few who can afford, by most estimates, a $200 or $300 afternoon at a soccer stadium. So I, how that makes sense at any level? You're cutting ridership in order to get more ridership. We have a saying where I come from, if you lose money on everything you sell but you make it up in volume, it's not going to work very well. So I would demand to understand, since Ripta is not forthcoming on how this came to be, why it's appropriate to subsidize a for-profit private entertainment company? It's not baseball, but it's entertaining. And I'll just leave you a fish though. The city of Patucket gave up $10 million in April in order to build that stadium. $10 million, have you heard that number recently? You heard? The city of Patucket is at risk for potentially over $100 million in bonds should it fail. And by the way, the people in the city of Worcester just paid $900,000 just this year alone to subsidize their baseball stadium. Sleep tight, Rhode Island.
Hi, my name is Joseph Bong. I have like a couple of stories to share here, they'll probably be pizza past hearings. I have a friend who is from Indonesia, she would take the 33 from Shah's Riverside, work her way to Kennedy Plaza to study at Johnson Wales. Now, if that service weren't cut, it would be stranded. Now I have another case to share. This one is from Korea. She took, she woke up this last morning and guess what? She walked 15 minutes across Wickingden, she lives off of Wickingden Street, to, to the Zandviert stop, and it didn't came. So what she had to do is she had to take an Uber to the, to our church in Patucket. Now, with my friend's uncle, who's also from Indonesia by the way, she, if, if they were to cut service on that, it's gonna be disaster for every, if it's cut service on Eddie Street, it's gonna be disaster because he's lazy to walk, as always, sometimes, but not all the time, to deliver mail at the post office. And another, and if you look at Ripta's efficiency study, it's proven to be the most reliable tran, Ripta is proven the most reliable transit system in all of Rhode Island. And we're on par with every single transit agency, probably on, or, I don't know. Oh, and if you, and another way to prevent, you can also prevent this is you can, I think, one of the solutions is you can, and if you look at what Mass State did, Mass State, it has a millionaire's tax where they provided every single, oh, transportation, free bus service to all our areas outside of the Boston area. So I'm, I don't know. So I'm calling on all the state leaders to do the right thing. That's all I'm gonna say. Thank you very much and I appreciate that.
My name is Solana Dooly, I live in South Providence. Sorry, I just ran over here in the middle of my volleyball game, just to say something quickly. I think we hear a lot of stories of individual people at these hearings that are using public transit themselves or know people who are using public transit, but the fact is that a functioning public transit system is an important part of a thriving state and of a thriving society, and we shouldn't need to hear individual sad stories to justify that. Transit is important, period. I don't really think we need to justify the transit any more than we need to justify firefighters in public schools. And I think it's so crazy that Peter Albiini still has a job. It's wild. That is bad my job. That's all I have to say.
If you have, yeah, if you have testimony to give, yeah.
My name is Renan A, I live in East Side Providence and I'm curious of my thoughts on our transit system. So I'll start with the personal effects. I can't drive for a variety of reasons and while I use my bicycle to get around a lot, to run errands, I very much rely on transit to get further than like my immediate neighborhood. Specifically, I regularly take the 902 in order to travel to the west side and connect myself to the rest of the network. The only stop near my apartment is a 902 and I rely, I rely it to connect me to Kennedy Plaza and, you know, to take the 1 to Market Basket and stuff like that. And with a, with a potential reduction on this route, I'm looking at like a significant, you know, hindrance on my ability to just live my life and do the things that I need to do around the city. Not to go to businesses, visit friends' houses. And, you know, for what? Because it's, it's not just about me, this, this sort of thing affects all of us. Transit ridership in Rhode Island has already been declining in the past 10 years, especially since COVID. And why aren't we doing anything about this? Why are we actively letting it get worse? The thing about transit is that it's really essential for, it's like the backbone of any good city, it's inherently freeing and liberating, it lets anybody get around, not just people who have the privilege, you know, the able-bodied, the financial privilege of being behind the wheel, but like anyone who can take the bus. It also promotes financial activity around stops, you know, people can walk around and take transit, browse shops, spend money, contribute to the economy. And it's like a lifeline. You know, you're looking at this lifeline and you can't spare $10 million out of our $14 billion budget. When the two, when the, sorry, when the 72 bus had its frequency increased from every half hour to every 20 minutes last year, its ridership more than doubled and that goes the other way too, you know, if we, if our frequencies get reduced, we're gonna look at plummeting ridership and that's really gonna suck. It's, it's not just neglect, I feel like, to not give Ripta this extra $10 million. It's an attack on our urban fabric and on the countless people who rely on public transportation. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here, I'll do any more.
I'm Ian McCollum and I'm from here in Providence. And I'm, real quick, I'm just gonna ask him the questions. Have drivers ever had to grovel to the state legislation to justify the hundreds of millions of dollars for their roads?
Thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.